Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor?
Alright.
So, the first thing we have on our agenda is swearing in of our student reps. Oh my god, Linda, I didn't even wait for you! I'm sorry. Who moved in seconded? Sorry. I just was feeling bad that we, uh...
Well, no, the first...
Do me the flag.
Who moved in second?
We have that after the swearing in.
It's after the swearing. Was the Robs, wasn't it?
Huh? Yeah, I think it was the Robs. Sorry, Linda. It's a replay. So, what am I putting down? Who moved in?
Nobody knows.
Robs. Mark moved.
I moved in, Robs seconded.
Okay, moved in second on the first one. Sorry, we're usually very prompt.
Are going to swear in, swear you in as board members. After we finish with the oath of office, I'm going to give you another copy of the same document. I'm going to ask you to sign both sets, and I will sign the other, I will sign also. Okay? So if you can repeat after me, just speak into the microphone. I do solemnly affirm...
I do solemnly affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And to the governments established in the United States and this state...
And to the governments established in the United States and this state...
Under authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people...
And I do affirm...
And I do affirm...
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by Board policy...
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by Board policy...
For the Office of Student Representative to the Board of Education...
For the Office of Student Representative to the Board of Education...
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
Perform all the duties of that office...
Perform all the duties of that office...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome to the Board.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, welcome ladies. And like Linda said, always remember talking to your microphone. You'd be very surprised how quiet it gets the further you get away from it. And then nobody at home can hear you, and everyone at home wants to be able to hear you too, when they watch this dutifully after the Board meeting goes up online. So now we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Our flag's over there. So Linda, we don't have any, um, sorry, I keep putting you on the spot tonight. We don't have any communications on the agenda. Do we have anything else that's come in since?
Uh, no, there was just an email that all the Board members received regarding a HIP case.
Okay, thank you. So, next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes, which we're not going to approve tonight, but we'll do it at our voting session next week for the regular public and executive session meetings for August 21st, and the special public and executive session meetings for August 28th. Did anybody have any questions or concerns about any of those minutes? Okay. Student Representative Report? Are you guys prepared for this? Student Representative Report on your first night?
So, Friday was the first day of school for students, and we think it was a great success. The high school had an HP day. For those who are not familiar with the new schedule, that means that we saw all of our teachers, and we had a welcome assembly as well, that was hosted by Mr. Lassiter. People were really glad to see their friends and teachers, and they enjoyed telling everybody what they did over the summer.
In addition to that, the high school is slowly but surely adjusting to our new schedule. Students seem to like having their music classes in the morning during that Period 1, and other students who have decided not to take a Period 1 are looking forward to sleeping in. Teachers are also being a huge help in the adjustment, and students who have the first free period, free love getting up later again. In addition, today, all four schools had a moment of silence to commemorate those who gave their lives for this country on September 11th. Throughout the day, students in their social studies classes also took the time to reflect and discuss the importance of 9/11 16 years later.
So, the high school sports teams have already started their season, so the girls tennis team is 3-0. The boys soccer won their first game 6-0 and their second game 2-0. The girls soccer also won their first game 7-0. The girls varsity volleyball team won as well, 2-1. And the boys football games, first game against Bishop R was canceled because they have a shortage of players. If anyone has any recommendations for Coach McGlinn, I'm sure he would be thrilled to have them. And the cross-country team season, both for boys and girls, starts on Tuesday. They will be versing off against Matutin in Donaldson Park. And, over the summer, the Environmental Club did really good work in the gardens, which are right next to the cafeteria. So Max Rayseide is a student, and Mr. Kruger in particular, where they are almost every day watering them. Also some freshmen who came and helped us with weeding. And we have grown a lot of blue corn and a lot of serrano peppers, and we will be able to eat them too, so we're looking forward to that.
Finally, our Student Congress advisor, Ms. Barka, and I have decided that the Twitter, our HPHS Twitter that's run by Julia and I, is no longer the only, should not, should no longer be the only social media that we use. Looking at the stats that each tweet gets, not, there's not much interaction with the student body, so we were thinking possibly approval of a Snapchat and an Instagram, just to broaden our social media realm and get some more interaction with students. So if that's okay with you guys, particularly Dr. Taylor.
Come to me.
Okay, great. And finally, we just want to thank you guys for this opportunity. We're much so looking forward to working with you this year.
As we are with you guys. It's so strange, like, it's like, it's the automatic passage of time. Oh my goodness, that's right, another year has gone. We have new student reps, so it's very exciting. We're very glad you're both here. And very nice job tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will move on to Scott's report.
I'm going to step to the podium for this one. In June, we honored a number of students. One middle schooler, we did not have the opportunity to spotlight. Shane Boylan was here tonight, was not able to be with us because he was too busy fundraising. And I'd like to talk to the Board and the community for just a couple of minutes about why Shane is so special, and his supporting crew as well, Mom and Sister. Shane, as I just mentioned, is one of our middle school students. What he's here tonight to be recognized for is a special fundraiser that he's been facilitating now, which I love, because I'm a cyclist, and this is all about that. Shane has been organizing a post-Father's Day event, an 11-mile bike ride, which raises money for those who are suffering from depression. And he's paying tribute, when he does this, to his father, Tim Boylan, who was 51, died January of 2016 after a long struggle with depression. So this is in honor of his father, and of course, to contribute to the needs of people who suffer from this malady throughout the world. People from around the community have been coming out, they've talked about Shane, they've talked about the Depression Doesn't Ride Bike Event, that's the name of the event. Shane, actually, just yell out, when will it be this next year? Do you know? Do you have a date yet? Okay. Well, we'll help you get the word out and do whatever we can. So Depression Doesn't Ride is the name of the event. It raises awareness and funds specifically for an organization called the Hope for Depression Research Foundation. And with awareness of treatment, recovery from depression is possible. People can be spared the heartbreaking loss of suicide, which afflicts many of us and many here close to home. So, what I'd like to do is have Shane come up, so I can present it with a certificate of appreciation, and I'd love to get a picture, so I can create an article about you for our district website, which is visited by thousands of people from around the world. So you'll become famous, and before you know it, thousands of people will come out for this event. So, I'd like to ask the Board President, Sumaristi, to join me, and tell the student reps that one of your responsibilities is to take pictures.
If you don't mind, I just wanted to say it's a fantastic ride. I had the chance to be in it this year. My kids did it last year, and it's, it's just a great community event. A lot of people come out, it was a fantastic idea. And you know, I know for our family, it started some discussions about depression, and you know, it's a good context to have them in, you know, the context of a bike ride and a fundraiser. So thank you for that service that you're doing to the community, Shane. It's great. Sorry to interrupt you on your way out. Take care, goodbye.
I'm just going to need a second to set up my audio, and then I would like to get into the next part of my presentation, which is about partnerships we've continued and expanded on from previous years. Alex, can I ask you for a big favor? Could you check the master audio to see if I'm up and running here? Just trying to get some sound. Got my gun in here. I'm sorry for the buzz, just bear with me for a couple of minutes. We have been working very closely with our partners in the community, very closely. Some things, which you may not be aware, have been forged in just the last year. So, what I'd like to do is spend maybe the next 10 minutes showing you lots of pictures, I've got a two-minute video, and just remind the Board and the community how close we are to folks who can benefit from our kids' contributions and from whom we could benefit. I don't have to tell you the kind of relationship we have with the Graduate School of Education at Rutgers. You know about it. What you might not be aware is that, besides having a pipeline to the teacher preparation program, which has benefited us greatly, we've got some fabulous teachers as a result of the student teaching work that some of these folks have done in-house. We've also had access gratis, for free, to professional development resources, such as the Middle Grades Network, which is an organization of middle school educators from around the state, connected to RISA, which is an organization affiliated with the Grad School of Education. It's all about urban education and equity. That has allowed us to send our teachers to workshops at the Graduate School of Education without cost. We've also had an in-house teacher mentor, master teacher, Dr. Kedra Banks, who has been not only supervising the cooperating teachers and the student teachers who work with our kids, but has also provided direct support to some of our veterans. Some of you have been here on Saturdays at Bartle and are familiar with Conversation Cafe, and if you're not, I want to show you a video. It's an outgrowth of the partnership that we forged with the Grad School of Education. As you know, we have numbers and numbers of parents and guardians who speak English as a second language, and those numbers are increasing. So to help them mainstream into US culture and Highland Park society, and to also get them to be immersed in the English language, we have connected Rutgers grad students with our parents and guardians, who come on their own time on Saturday mornings to Bartle to take part in what we call Conversation Cafe. Rutgers actually featured our school district on one of its public service announcements, so I want to show that to you, if you haven't had a chance to see it already.
Conversation Cafe is a unique activity for students and parents to come together to form a better student group. The value of student teachers engaging parents to the school, trusting student teacher enables them to learn, to learn what is actually useful to the community, and to actually learn different facets of what really is good for the student population. These practices begin with research and practice. So it's not just about theory, and it's not just about practice. It's a combination of students that are acquiring that research in the classroom, especially where I can see that in students.
So now I want to shift gears and talk local, local. Some of you who've traveled to Main Street may have seen our GLOW decals showing up on storefronts. June Miller, who is our chief GLOW instructor, the GLOW program is serving our special needs population and helping them better understand how to interact with the community, take advantage of community resources, take place in, take part in workplace job site experiences. These are some of the local businesses to whom I want to give a shout-out, who have taken our kids in. Here's some pictures. It's actually one of our students at a local grocery. My pal, and here's another student, who's actually working at the Turkish place where I just had dinner a little while ago, Bridge. So what we're doing now is we're honoring the organizations by giving them decals, posting them on their windows, so they can proudly tap the relationship that we have with them. We also have some of our GLOW students working right here in the school district. Frankie is a volunteer in, at the Irving School. Irving teachers have greatly benefited from our GLOW kids' help and support. Maya, as well, who you saw picture a couple of slides ago, has been volunteering in Miss Gap's kindergarten room.
Can we put that on the website?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I will, I will. In fact, I'll make a news item about it. The George Street Playhouse now has worked with us for three years. The first year, two years ago, was a pilot year, actually, I'm sorry, second, sorry, second year. The first year, last year, was a pilot year. This year, it's taken off. We're now going to be offering residency programs, and I'll explain what that is in just a second, to our kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, and fourth grade students. The residency program has real-life playwrights and actors and actresses coming to our classrooms and working with our kids for at least six weeks, usually one or two days a week, side by side with the teacher, to develop a lesson or a unit around some aspect of the curriculum, usually a piece of literature or something related to the social studies curriculum, so that the kids are visualizing and fleshing out through movement and voice and acting the curriculum. These are some shots from Bartle School. The beginning of the program actually has the kids just taking part in team-building activities. Some of our teachers in the fall leverage the George Street Playhouse activities to actually establish their classroom behavior norms and relationship-building norms, because the activities in which these kids engage before they start acting is all about that. We also, I should add that we also were able to bring the residency program to sixth grade last year. We may be able to do that, depending on what funds we have available again this year. These kids worked with Darabatnik's English class. Something that I don't believe the Board has heard from me yet is the relationship we now have with Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital. We now bring in a statewide program called the Safety Ambassadors Program to the teen center. Kim Holman, who is one of the social workers in the center, works with Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital to train some of our juniors and seniors on how to be safety ambassadors, so they can then push down into first grade to talk about safety topics, very common, everyday safety topics. Here's a shot of some of our kids, our older ones, working with the little ones. Julia, Olivia, did you do any of this?
No, unfortunately not.
I mentioned last year that we are slowly but surely partnering with schools in Hangzhou Province, China, thanks to Elsie Dublin Foster's organization, Elsie's Home Stays, and a Chinese-based organization called the American International Educational Group. This is something that's been in the works since before I got here. We sent a team of administrators and teachers to China to scout out the idea of actually sending some of our kids to China. We have hosted, so far, three different groups of Chinese elementary students. We actually, we also brought, I think, two students to the middle school last year. Most of our kids though, most of the kids that we've hosted have been working at Bartle. We would like to send some of our high school students, and maybe some middle school students, it's a conversation worth having with the Curriculum Committee and the Board President, to China, perhaps as early as April. Something that we've been talking about, there'd be no cost to the district, except for visa fees, which can sometimes be, I've been told, as much as $300. Those are costs which we could try to offset in-house for those students who can't afford to go. I haven't determined if we do take this leap, how we would select the students, but I'll be working with the Board and my leadership team closely to figure all those details out. And finally, I do want to touch on the Bartle Social Decision Making Lab, which is coming back in force this year. It's something that Tracy Maiden, one of our second-grade teachers, took it upon herself to reintroduce, thanks to working with the Rutgers University Psychology Department. We will be hosting in the spring, like we did a few years ago, undergraduates from the Psychology Department to staff on a semi-full-time basis, two, three days a week, the Social Decision Making Lab. We're talking about carving out some space upstairs, down by the Basic Skills area, where, oh gosh, I forgot the names, on this cantilellaria, thank you, and the sopelia are currently teaching. There's a little space there we might be able to use, so we could actually house the Social Decision Making Lab in its own space. I must also remind the Board and let the community know that our teen center, thanks to the Psychology Department, has been able to host three post-doc, sorry, two post-doc students and one Master of Social Work student. Every year I've been here, and I've been told this is an ongoing part-relationship we've had, so that we can staff at any given time up to five individuals to provide individual counseling to our kids. So those are just some new partnerships that we forged and an update on the existing ones. Are there any questions, besides the comment, which I like from Ruth about putting it on the website?
Yeah.
Any other ideas? Yeah, Miss Gal.
Not an idea. You said that we had, it's the question, we had hosted three groups of Chinese elementary school students? What was the context of that? I hadn't heard about that.
Well, we, when we established our partnership, we agreed that, we have a memorandum of agreement that we signed off on. We agreed that we would bring in, I think we've had up to 10 students at a time, we paired them up with ambassadors, our own kids, for a week. We work with Elsie Dublin Foster's group to house them in residences. So they shadow our kids for a couple of weeks, and, I'm sorry, for one week, we're thinking about doing it for a couple of weeks. And now I think we'd like to pay the favor back and send some of our kids to them.
This happened last year?
Wait, no, I...
Last year.
At Bartle or Irving or...
We did.
Where, which school?
Not at Irving. We hosted some of our, some students.
There were also students at the high school. There were also students at the high school. I shadowed one of them for two days before they decided to pair it with somebody who could actually speak Mandarin. So I don't know if there's the potential of high school students coming back, but I know we did have four or five different students there at the time.
This is surprising to me, as a parent with a student at Bartle, I don't, I don't know if any of the, were the students made aware of this? Was there sort of an educational, I mean, it sounds fantastic, when you say that. I would love to see a little more publicity. I had heard nothing about it.
Sure.
My students, my children know nothing about it, and it might have been really cool to...
Well, it's, I mean, I'd be glad to expand on it, absolutely.
Do they, I mean, is there any sort of whole-school activity that goes along with that?
No. No, the kids just, basically, as if they were visiting from another state, or in this case, another country. Shadowed the kids, walked to their classes from class to class. Obviously, we get permission from the, our student ambassadors' families to work with the kids, but they don't go home with those kids. Again, they go home to wherever Elsie has set them up.
Right. Yeah, very interesting.
But I'd be glad to provide you some pictures and even get some testimony if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be great.
I think, yeah, I also think that, you know, when this happens again at Bartle, it would be great if the district would sort of make that information known to students at Bartle, if, I mean, I'm sure there's privacy concerns, but there's probably, you know, probably students at Bartle will be very interested to hear about this, and maybe get a chance to interact with some students from another country.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Just want to thank you for highlighting the, what seems to be a tremendous growth in interaction with the Rutgers community, because I mean, that's always been something that, our district is right here, right next to Rutgers, and it's been something of a frustration for some of us who have kind of coexisted in the same neighborhood, but not really had that interaction. So, thank you for bringing that to the top of mind.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I want to turn the buzz off.
If nobody has anything else for Scott, we will, yeah, we will move on to, Judy? We'll move on to our committee reports. So first is curriculum and instruction show? No, Ruth is doing it today, right?
Yeah, that would be great. I unfortunately wasn't able to attend, so...
Microphone.
It was just Dr. Taylor and myself. I don't even remember when, this Tuesday, I believe. So we started out by talking about the professional development that happened over the first couple of days after Labor Day, which included a keynote delivered by, and I don't know how to say his name, Gian, Gian Paul Gonzalez, who's a motivational speaker and a former teacher in New Jersey, followed by workshops that included, the workshops were on cultural responsiveness, effective collaboration between paraprofessionals and teachers, safe schools training, Genesis training, that's our new parent, parent information system, restorative practices, and behavior management. Those were just a few of them. That sounds great, terrific topics. And then we discussed Suzanne Ackley and Dr. Nikosia coming next meeting to tell us about the curricular changes that they've been working very hard on, and, which they also went over, they presented those changes with the staff, who were not part of the fostering of them, and they will answer questions about it at the Board meeting. Then, we discussed the lack of media-centered teachers at Irving and Bartle. So, and please correct me if I get it wrong, I appreciate your correction here. Irving will have, both places will have substitutes, who at this point will be following lesson plans that are being written by our own teachers. Okay, terrific. And we are actively still looking for those replacements.
I'll expand on Bartle.
Okay.
We are all, since, Mr. Benjamin has scheduled all of the regular education teachers to co-teach with the media specialists, this was already in the works before we had a vacancy. The regular education teacher will be also expanding the literacy block into that media slot, so kids can check books out, but they'll also get additional lessons in literacy.
Okay, so it's not...
So it won't be media-specific.
It's not as special anymore.
At least not until we do find somebody to fill the position.
Okay. What does that mean, not as special? There's been a lot of talk on Facebook about, it's not as special. I mean, I understand for my children that they will be going to the library for... I mean, I understand for my children that they will be going to the library for half an hour every week, which used to be the case for Spanish, so it's not a special, but it's still sort of a special.
I think the way that it was interpreted in the past was that's the time that the teacher is not present in the classroom with the students.
I see, but it is still a period of library time every week, for those who are wondering, while we look for our professional media specialist replacements.
Yes, they are having that media center time.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Also, we talked about the park, which is always our favorite topic to discuss, and the possibility of a refresher course in algebra to meet the very real issue for those students who either fail or are in danger thereof of not passing the algebra park, which as of right now is a requirement for graduation, beginning with the class of 2021. So the way that I understood it, they either need to take the park and, they need to take the park regardless, even if they were going to develop a portfolio and present that as the requirement, they have to have taken the park before that and failed it.
With just one clarification.
Okay.
They don't have to have taken Algebra I if they took Algebra I in middle school. The way the regs are written, they have to take all of the high school park tests that they're eligible for, so that's any of the ELAs, any math class that they take in high school. But this is kind of like the lack of forethought that went into this. If a kid took Algebra I in eighth grade and didn't pass it, nothing says they have to pass that Algebra I. I mean, they have to pass it as a graduation card, but then they could still potentially be eligible for the portfolio.
Okay, okay.
Is all I'm saying. So if they, that student, if they did not pass Algebra I in eighth grade, they could potentially then take all of the other high school math and high school language arts parks that they're eligible for and still need to do the portfolio, but they could still pass without ever having passed that Algebra I test.
But they have to sit for it.
It's wacky. Well, they've already sat for it.
Okay.
I mean, if they failed it, they've already sat for it.
Right, right.
And I think even if they've opt out, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
I mean, they just, the reg states that they have to take all of the ones that they're eligible for in high school, again, if they took Algebra I in eighth grade, that's not a high school test. And then, then they can be eligible for the portfolio.
Okay.
Whether they've passed or failed any of those high school park tests.
Okay, so the discussion was about the possibility of having this refresher course for those kids who were, were going to have issues passing that park.
Right, or they can just re, they can retake it and, you know.
Right, right, right.
But I think it's the state requirement. The state is saying if they're going to retake it, they have to have a refresher.
Correct, or a regular course.
You can't just keep giving them.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
You can't just keep giving them.
Requiring us to provide the refresher course.
Correct.
And I promise to expand on what the refresher course could look like for the next meeting, because there may be a resolution on that agenda to request compensation for the teachers who teach it.
Okay, great, great. All right, and then we ended the meeting just by speaking a little bit about restorative practices and what it's going to look at, look like this year in the middle school, starting out with, so.
Okay, and then can you just take us through the agenda items?
Yeah. I didn't pick up.
I just want to clarify for our student reps. You may have already picked up on this, but the way we have our meeting structured now is we have, typically during the school year, we have two meetings a month, a week apart. The first one is just what we call our workshop, so we just talk about stuff, we don't actually vote on anything. And then for next week, the agenda will look ostensibly identical with maybe a few things that are added, that are usually bolded in in italics, so you know that they weren't on the last agenda and they're new to this one, but then we'll vote on them next week. So it just gives the board and every, the community, everybody, opportunity to see what's going on for the month, give us any feedback, come make public comment, you know, we get to talk about it at the board table, and then we vote on the next week. Doesn't stop people from coming back two months later and telling us, but we try to make it all as transparent and above-board as we possibly can.
Yes, we do. Okay, so number one is just the committee report. Number two is a resolution to approve a HIB incident report, a bunch of them. And number three is also a resolution to approve a bunch of HIB incident reports from last year. Number four is a resolution to approve graduate student placements. And that's it.
Short curriculum agenda. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Ruth about anything regarding the report or the agenda?
Well, I'm not sure for Ruth, but I was thinking that now might be a good time to get an update on what is happening with French in the middle school.
Sure, I was going to do that later. I'll do it now, because you're right, it's probably more applicable. So, well, actually, can I have the finance committee?
Oh, it's actually, it's actually on the agenda for later in old business, but, yeah.
Yeah, so why don't we just do it then?
We could do it then. So could I ask another question? This is not related to that. This is related to the start of school day, the start of the school year on Friday with a half a day. I did check around other school districts, which all started Tuesday or Wednesday or, in a few cases, Thursday, but I was curious, and I didn't remember why we started Friday. So maybe he can remind me.
We offered, well, we, we've liked to have included three days of professional development for the teachers in the beginning. We have so much to get to, compliance, training, restorative practices, the whole nine yards, IEP review. So I recommended to the board that we wait until after the Labor Day weekend instead of starting on Friday, the first, which had us start Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, professional development days, and then Friday was the natural start, unless we were to wait until the Monday.
Right.
And we went with a half-day because we wanted that extra time. The second half of the day was spent focusing on IEP reviews. So when I work, I work backwards when I develop the calendar. I start with graduation and see where I lay come September, and this all plays out so that we don't start too late. We don't end too late.
And contractually, do we have to, can we not start PD before Labor Day? Is that, there's nothing?
We can't.
We can't.
It's frowned upon to start on the 31st or before September 1st, but we could start Friday.
Yeah, a lot of districts did have theirs on Thursday and Friday, but we had three, so, correct? We had three days.
Three days.
And many, many districts had just two.
That's correct. So. They were fruitful, but if the board decides after we review the calendar that we should, we can spread, we spread our professional development days out, I'm sure we could work something out. My last district actually had a two-day professional development day launched in September and then waited a month to have that third professional development day. So if we feel that that's actually more advantageous for the kids, then I'm open to taking that back to the leadership team. Two days September.
I'd be interested in hearing what the, what the staff says about three.
I mean, just anecdotally, the stuff that I heard from students and staff, just being out in the community, was that it was really a nice, gentle way to begin the school year. It was, you know, pressure-free, the first day was really all about like greet and the PD, I heard, was awesome, you know. So I heard nothing but positive things, but again, that's just, you know, what I'm hearing out in the community anecdotally, so, for whatever it's worth.
I think there's mixed reviews, for sure. I heard nothing but positive as well, but I saw some negatives, so.
Sure.
And I personally thought it was fine. And as a matter of fact, this morning, like lunches and all that was like, oh, gosh, really? Wait, now are we going to hold day one? No!
Kids will be in bed, well, now, exhausted.
To the student reps.
Oh, yeah, I personally did enjoy having that half-day. It gave the teachers an opportunity. We kind of did syllabus stuff today, but on Friday it was nice. We got to do a lot of icebreakers, we got to get to know the teachers and they got to know us. And I think that there was, you know, we had a shorter amount of time, so we had less like fluff, and it was just kind of getting to the point, which I thought was really nice as well.
I mean, I would say I thought, I see it a little differently. We spent almost all of today still going over like classroom norms, which I guess must be some kind of big buzzword because like eight of my teachers went over them, and...
There's always lingo. Every school year comes with new lingo.
So I actually thought that today kind of, there was only two or three teachers I had who actually started a lesson, which I thought was kind of a shame. So I actually think, I thought the half-day on Friday was awesome, just in terms of like my mental, like easing back in, but I also think that a half-day and one full day or two half-days, something like that, that still eases us in, but that way we can actually get through all of that boring classroom, like all of the setting stuff that, and then we would have had this kind of full week of real school. But, you know, we also had this new schedule in the high school, so each class was like 20 minutes on Friday, so that, you know, that must not have been the same for all the schools. I can't speak for Irving through middle school.
It's really nice to hear everybody's thoughts on it, because I, I wanted to hear all of that and, I don't know, a lot of chatter.
I think there's probably yet to be a school district that has put up a calendar, a full year, school year calendar, that everyone has been happy about every bit about the calendar, you know? I mean, if you, you put 50 people in a room, there's going to be, one person's going to have something to pick apart about a calendar, so, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, I think no one was harmed. All right, so if no one else has any curriculum and instruction questions, we will move on to finance facilities with Mr. Mark Krieger, who we missed all summer because he's been gallivanting around the world and leaving us behind and not taking.
I miss you all as well. I miss being here. On the other hand, so, we had a finance committee meeting before, before our session started tonight. Thanks to Linda, we had some interesting information and some clarifications on the agenda, so thank you, Linda. And Rob and myself and Darcy and Linda and then Scott discussed a variety of finance issues. So the first thing I want to say is that all of them revolve around unanticipated costs and unanticipated revenue, and where we're going to get more revenue or, or less costs so that we can have a budget through the year that gives us enough money that we can run the district properly. And this is really what we do in all of these sessions. We go over where we are, what we need, how we're going to make it happen, and how we're not going to spend too much, and how we're going to hopefully get money in we didn't expect, one way or another. The first of those items, which is in the finance and facilities voting list for next time, are the total of $355,000 in state aid that we did not anticipate. That's in fact items four and five. Excess extraordinary aid that was not anticipated of $147,000, and reserve additional state aid. That's the money that was talked about all year. The legislature's going to give us more money. We got $208,000. You add it up, it's $355,000 that we did not anticipate, which sounds like a lot of money. It's, it's not a lot of money.
Evaporates like that.
It's evaporating before our very eyes. Now, that's not to say we're not, that we won't get additional money in other ways, savings and programs, or perhaps not as many special education outside placements, or any other number of things, but in fact, that money, a lot of that money is spent. And in fact, in the, in the meeting, we talked about athletic transportation costs of $30,000 additional over budget because we can't get buses very easily, so we have to rent coaches instead, you know, large coach buses instead. The health benefit costs, which were anticipated by the state to be 8.4% increase, and that's what we budgeted, are going to in fact, the premiums are in fact going to go up by 13%. That will cost us $90,000 unbudgeted. The various negotiated, part of our negotiated settlements, which were done after the budget, particularly around curricula, will cost us $35,000. So you start adding that up and a good portion of that $355,000 disappears. We've been able to, in the last several years since I've been here, we've been able to make that up, and we've been able to make that up and more, just in a lot of different ways, but we, we need to all the time be vigilant on this and not spend what we don't really need to spend, and just be very careful to keep our eye on this every month. In fact, we were discussing, when could we get a more comprehensive report? You know, when can Linda put any other sources or deficits together for us so we have a more, a more comprehensive report? But there were just a number of these things. The number of international students that we budgeted hasn't been met. We're going to, we're going to have a shortfall there, et cetera. The, the, the students in eighth grade who are going to take French via a virtual online course, that's going to cost us numbers like $8,000 or $10,000. So those numbers add up, and then again, some of the savings add up and some of the unanticipated revenues add up, but we just always have to be on top of that. And that was the bulk of what we talked about in our committee meeting. To go over the facilities, the finance and facilities agenda, item two is our usual bill list. It's much smaller, you know, we're going over the summer numbers, but the general bill list and the athletic bill list, the travel-related expense, number four, uh, number three, excuse me, those are our typical numbers. Items four and five that are the total of $355,000. At our next meeting, we're actually going to have to allocate those numbers. So Darcy will talk to Scott and perhaps talk to me or other board members, what areas are we going to want to earmark that money for? Because we have to earmark it for this year or next year. We have to earmark it this year, it has to be for specific programs. Item six is for contractors. Item seven is for two new out-of-district placements of students. Those, you can see, are very, very costly, and I'm not sure if those were budgeted, and I'm not sure if we've had any students come back into district or move out of district. The answer is no, so that's a $90,000 or $80,000 that we did not budget. And again, this is just what happens. And I don't want to give anybody too much ajuda, you know, talking about this.
How did you know I was thinking ajuda? That's like exactly what I was trying to imply.
The thing is, the thing is, if we're always, if anyone looking as well on the, on the tube or online, the, this is just typical. I mean, this is what we go through in all these meetings and try to keep our handle on where we are financially, but we know we're not allowed to run out of money. I hear that the, forget it, I was going to say something, I won't say. Okay, item eight is a pass-through for nursing services. We don't actually pay for that. That comes through the state. Item nine is a donation of a, of a base clarinet, so thank you, Kevin Darity, for the donation. Item 10 is the acceptance of a sign for Joe Pola Castro for the, for the athletic field, and again, thank you to friends of Joseph Pola Castro for donating that. We're going to accept funds for purchasing a milk cooler, and thanks to the American Dairy Association and Dairy Council, that's over $3,000, that supports the Bartle School Item 12 is a partnership with STS Global Studies to accept selected students with international visas to our school, and that's the international students that we accept here. Item 13 is a joint transportation agreement to save money on transporting students via bus with Edison. And item 14 is to support the George Street Playhouse application for a grant of $25,000 from the Provident Bank Foundation to implement a creative dramatics theater arts integration program at the Harlem Park Schools. And that's the full list.
I just have a question about that.
Yes.
So if that money is a grant that the George Street Playhouse received?
I think they're trying to.
They're applying for it.
They're applying for it. They're applying. Correct. So they can provide the residency at Irving. They're very hopeful.
Does that mean that we will not be paying for the George Street?
Correct. Just at Irving.
That much. We're still paying for what we've already contracted with them.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, okay.
Right.
Thanks.
I just want to expand on one point. Sure. The Joe Pola Castro. Yes. Commemoration is going to take, dedication, I should say, is going to take place this Friday, 15th. We're going to be sending out messages. You'll get an email from us if you'd like to come. Okay. Time, the whole nine yards. Will Joe be there, I hope? That's the plan. He should be, he should be on the sidelines, because we do anticipate playing a game that night.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are we going to, we are going to have a game? That's the plan. It's always day by day, but right now we're scheduled for a game. We have enough students at this point. Okay.
No colds, no colds are allowed.
I was going to get my old uniform. I was going to get my old uniform out, but I'll pass. Sure, there's a lot of players who would love to go out, you know, and join the team.
I don't think they'll let us re-enroll you at this point.
No, I know. Too many years. Okay, well, that's the list.
And so, the only thing that I wanted to, I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, no, go.
With the number 10, the Pola Castro field dedication, are we changing the name of the field at this time? From, because I think it's.
I think it's Dakelman right now to Pola Castro.
Okay.
I thought it was the, I thought it was the.
It wasn't the Dakelman part. Jay Dakelman is staying.
It's not, Jay. It's the scoreboard.
Or it's adding it to.
It's being added to the scoreboard.
Scoreboard, right. Because remember, that was the gentleman who came and spoke to us.
Yeah, yes.
His name got put on the, his name got put on the scoreboard.
He didn't want it there.
He didn't want it there, so.
So, Joe's name is being put up on the scoreboard, but Jay, I'm sorry, yes, and Jay's name is staying on the field.
Donovan.
That was my understanding.
Donovan, Donovan, Donovan.
Rick Donovan. That's the gentleman who was there. Thank you.
I win.
Yep.
My brain works sometimes.
What time Friday?
Oh, I believe it's 7:00 PM, but we'll verify. I'll send a message out to the board and the community.
So, the only other thing that I wanted to touch on was what Mark touched on, which is this additional, these additional funds and us having to figure out how and where those are going to be allocated. You know, I think we'll talk about that probably a little bit later tonight, too, when Scott talks to us, I think we put that in new business. But, there are a few potential things, and I think we talked about this a little bit last time, too. One of the things we could potentially do with that is put it into this year's budget, use part of that to finish up the air conditioning work that, you know, we've been, we've been thinking, we'll slowly put, you know, $50,000 to $100,000 in each budget if we can, if we could just use this $200,000 that fell out of the sky and take care of that all at once, that would be fantastic. But, this is why we're always looking at those, you know, our expenses versus what we've budgeted, to see how ahead or behind we are. You know, there may be more pressing needs that are coming up, which there always seems to be. One of the other things that Scott and I have discussed is, he's going to talk to us a little bit later about class size. It's come up that class sizes in the middle school are kind of big. If we can't adjust that by moving kids around, possibly we need a new, another sixth period or something. So, you know, we'll look at all those things before we allocate that money, so we make sure it's going towards, you know, the most useful purpose possible. But, I don't want to give the impression that we're going to be making those decisions, you know, where that money's going to go, like, you know, behind closed doors or secretly. But, we do have to do it at the next meeting, right, Linda? We have a limited amount of time to decide how that money's going to be used, so we need to do that. But, those are, right now, those are the things that we're considering. Do we use it for those, you know, immediate needs this year that haven't been budgeted, like the air conditioning or possibly additional staff? Or do we put it towards, what's the other thing that we can do? We can put it in.
We can designate it as going into reserve for.
For next year.
18, 19 schools.
Okay. So, those are the, you know, it's not like we don't have a bajillion options of what we can do with it, but those, so those are, you know, those are the two things that we have to decide between.
And we don't have to put that money into specific items for this year.
Right.
It's simply, we have to say we're spending it this year versus we're spending it next year.
Right.
No, if we say we're spending it this year, we do have to give an indication of what account number.
Oh, what accounts?
In the budget, we're going to put it in, we have to put it in a budget line, but we can't transfer it elsewhere within limitations.
Right.
There are restrictions on the percentages that you can transfer.
I see.
Without going to the county department of education for approval.
Right. And it was only one of those accounts that we had to do that with, isn't that the case? One of the two batches of money.
If we choose to appropriate additional funds, we need to say how we're going to appropriate.
Right.
For example, we need to, we want to appropriate $90,000 to health benefits.
Right.
So, we would designate the health benefits account number.
Right, right.
And, you know, that is for, that is for health benefits. Transportation, you don't have to be too specific as to what health benefits you're going to do, or what in transportation you're going to do, but you have to designate the general account number.
Okay.
Okay. But, as I said, you do have some flexibility after the fact. If you determine that your needs are elsewhere, or, you know, that you didn't need as much as you thought in that one area, you can transfer it to another area that you have discovered that you had a greater need in.
So, by next week, finance will have to come forward with.
A plan.
A plan.
Call me.
Yeah, so if anybody has any additional suggestions, you know, let us know.
Mark, and then number six, the resolution approving contractors? That's just an approval of the contractors, not necessarily for their services at this time, correct? It's just saying that that would be the rates if we did get in a position where we needed those services. Number six, the resolution approving the contractors for.
The first one is, oh, okay, so, we have a school physician, and to designate St. Peter's as our school physician, the price for the year is $6,250. Then, there are other medical services that they provide as needed, and there's a list of different medical services and costs related to those. That's the second item, as per the contract fee list.
Oh, okay.
Additional services. But, the service to be the school physician is $6,250. It's a annual contract.
It is an annual, okay. And then, for the one above it, is that also?
I believe that's professional development that already took place.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, so if there's nothing else for Mark on finance, we'll move to personnel with Judy.
Okay, we did have a meeting last week, very brief. A lot of it really overlapped with some of the things that the curriculum committee talked about tonight, which was, again, the Irving and Bartle media specialist positions. So, rest assured, we are still looking, we are re-advertising in the Star Ledger, it's on Apple track. So, if anybody listening knows anybody that is a certified school media specialist, they can go on to our website and apply for the job. Let's see, so, not too much else except for agenda review, so I'll go through that. We had a resignation of a part-time general secretary in the educational services department, Denise Hessler, but we also have on the agenda a resolution to replace her with Caitlin Kovalchik, so that's number three. We have a number four resolution to approve Montana Burkholz as a part-time maternity replacement special ed teacher at Irving. And we looked at her resumes, she comes from Rutgers, she has a graduate degree and master's degree in elementary and special ed. Number five is filling the position of central office, that was a retirement vacancy. This resolution would approve Linda Moran for administrative assistant, which is a promotion within, she is a current employee, so she would be promoted into that position. Let's see. Then, six is an after-school program assistant. And, let's see, anything else important here? Oh, I have to read in a couple of corrections that Linda passed me down. Number 17 is some changes in hours for paraprofessionals. The first one, Jean Levin's should stay as seven, it is not a change, so we can just cross that out. And Maria Malan, Saria, Sero?
Yeah.
That should be 7.25 hours. And then, number 16, this was interesting, that shows what salaries are funded by state and federal grants in the pre-K program. And that's about it, really.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Judy?
Yeah, I'm embarrassed to ask, because I was present at this meeting, but I've forgotten what was discussed. I know there, I've had some questions from middle school parents about the seventh-grade algebra teacher. There's at least one class that started school with a substitute, and I know there was an issue about, various issues about hiring someone, and I wonder, is there a sort of a status update on where we're going with that?
Actually, let me clarify, it's an intervention or BSI teacher who we're replacing. I gave you bad information when we had our committee meeting.
Okay.
So, it's an interventionist.
Okay.
Who we started out the year having a substitute work with the kids, but I am meeting with a final round candidate tomorrow, who looks promising on paper, and will hope to have a recommendation to the board Monday. As far as I can tell, this individual is not working in a school district, so we may be able to start the person as soon as possible if it works out with me.
Wonderful. There, I know there also is a vacancy, thank you for that update, in seventh-grade algebra. I happen to know this because my child is in it. The substitute indicated that the substitute would be in a classroom for some amount of time. It appeared that there was not a teacher currently, you know, available for that class. I'm not, and so, the substitute said she wouldn't be there all year, but, you know, didn't really put an end on it.
I'll have to get back to you about that, because I was told it was an interventionist.
Okay, there's also, I mean, there's also an algebra teacher. They started on the first day of school with, you know, I don't have a lesson plan, so let's just, you know.
So, what would you like more information about in particular?
I would like more information about the seventh-grade algebra class that currently has had a substitute for two days, and there's not been information about when a teacher, a regular teacher, will be assigned. Thanks.
Assuming this is the same individual while I'll be interviewing tomorrow, that person would start on Tuesday.
Okay, I assume it's not the same individual, though, because this is like a seventh-grade regular algebra class, not an intervention class?
Let me follow up.
Okay. This is a different position, in other words, unless the, perhaps the normal seventh-grade algebra teacher is currently teaching the intervention or something, and they're all going to be moved back. But, there's one algebra class that has no teacher, so.
I'll look into it and make sure I get back to you tomorrow.
Wonderful, thank you.
Well.
Normally, I wouldn't ask about my own kid's issue, but I thought that that was the issue we had talked about at the meeting, so, thank you for clarifying.
Something about, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Ringing a bell, bud?
Ringing a bell, I remember, I was confused about who the teacher was, and this is at least one of the positions that is not currently with a teacher. It was, you know, disappointing for the beginning of the year to have the teacher say, well, I don't have any lessons, and then the second day, I guess they got a worksheet. So, naturally, I was in fear of a French-like situation.
So, we'll figure that one out.
Okay, sorry.
All right, that's okay. Does anybody else have any personnel questions?
I have a question, maybe it's for Linda, exactly how number 16 works again? The resolution approved salaries funded by state and federal grants? Is this something that's already part of how we budgeted?
It's a designation, they are budgeted in these places, but we are required to have a resolution on an agenda designating any staff that are funded, whose contracted salaries are funded by state or federal grants.
Okay, but it's not like it's additional money coming in because we're already.
No, it's, no, they're already budgeted in these areas. It's just a formal declaration.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, so if nobody else has any other personnel questions, we'll move on to policies. Ann?
Yes, we have two policies on the agenda, and I will be going around to policy members to attempt to schedule a late September slash early October policy meeting, but these are two policies we needed to get on the agenda ASAP. I did, I sent out an email to everybody asking if folks had comments. I did hear back from a subset of committee members, I assume the others were, you know, at least okay to put these on the agenda for first reading. The first one, special education receiving schools, this is one, it's a mandatory policy. It doesn't have much actual application to us, as I understand things, because I don't believe we receive any special education students from other districts. Is that correct?
We may receive some special students from other districts.
Oh, I didn't realize we had a program that sort of would draw in, oh, okay. So, it does apply to us. The changes, you can see on the agenda materials, that's 2461, they are mostly, perhaps even entirely sort of linguistic semantic changes, as a correction to a statutory citation. The second, oh, I'm sorry, there, I apologize, there are some additions on page two regarding what the receiving school, requirements of the receiving school are. However, these appear to be statutory requirements, we're just restating the statute. But, if anybody has questions, they should certainly feel free to check out the policy and get me concerns or questions before the next meeting. The second policy is 5230 pertaining to late arrival and early dismissal. The administration has proposed some changes that are shown to account for the fact that we have a new high school schedule whereby certain students can legally, can permissively come in late and will no longer be penalized for that. High school students are familiar, you know, it's in the handbook when you can come in late, when you can't, but we wanted to make sure that our policy would be consistent with that and not appear to penalize students who came in late under the new schedule. So, everyone, please take a look at that. It's, I've reviewed it, I believe committee members probably have. It strikes me that this articulates well the intent of our new schedule, but please get me any questions or concerns before the next meeting.
I was just thinking, in that third paragraph.
Yes.
That thing that, the thing that's changed to, you know, make the policy to be more in keeping now with not having first period, it's just a bit clunky. There's got to be a better way to say that than students who are not assigned to a first course or study hall are excused from attendance for that period since they are not scheduled for a course.
I didn't go over it for.
It's a little circular.
Scott, maybe we could ask you to rewrite that?
Yeah, I'll work on that.
El, for elegance, thank you.
And then, the beginning of 1, 2, 3, 4, paragraph 5, it says the principal and designee. I think it means the principal or designee.
Ah, yes, that is correct. And the word one should have the E like smushed in next to the O and the N. That could be my printer, though.
Should we also be saying high school students rather than just students, because that only applies to high school, or, I wasn't sure about that.
I mean, I guess if we later change the schedule so that some students don't have first period class, I don't know.
12, so perhaps you need to say students in grades nine through 12.
I'm fine adding that or leaving it as is. I mean, right now, there are no other students who do not have a first period class, so nobody better be taking advantage of it.
Good point.
But, perhaps we should clarify. Well, yeah, what if we change our schedule again, then we'll have to go through this.
Yeah, I mean, if a middle schooler somehow gets a study hall first period, we don't want them to not show up.
Oh, I guess some, yeah, right.
And I'll make the changes tomorrow, send them to you.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, so, next week, we'd only be adopting it for first reading anyway, so we can review whatever changes Scott makes between now and then, and then next week is just first reading, and then we'd still have a whole nother one, and these are not exactly earth-shattering policy decisions we're making. Okay, so if no one else has any questions or comments about those policies, we'll move over to equity and excellence with Sharice, to see if she has any updates for us.
Well, we have not had a meeting, but that's okay, because there are tons of things that are happening in everybody else's committees that are equity and excellence related. And amazing things have been happening all throughout the summer. Suzanne Ackley and the curriculum writers updated the ELA, sorry, English Language Arts curriculum, and added culturally relevant texts across all grade levels. So, now, students will, every student will see themselves in the books that are presented in their classrooms.
And not just as athletes or musicians, hopefully.
Correct.
That's the goal.
Yes, a whole, a whole range of new opportunities. Throughout the summer, Dr. Taylor and the leadership team were meeting and doing their professional development, and then kicked off this year with the restorative justice professional development, which we had really bobbied strongly for, and so, that seems like it's beginning to all kind of come into place. Other professional development was done on building strong student-teacher relationships, which is really the core of restorative justice, is relationship building. So, that's all happening. Discipline study group will be meeting very soon in October, October 18th, so we will continue to look at our discipline responses within our schools, and that's all now informed by all of the professional development done throughout the summer and the beginning of this school year. In addition, the pathways, the excellent strategic planning. Equity Committee will begin meeting again this fall and into the spring. There are three meetings scheduled, so check your email if you're on the Equity Committee for the strategic planning, and do respond about your availability. And then, in 2018, we will be celebrating our 40th anniversary of the desegregation of our schools here in Highland Park, which we hope will be a big celebration and an opportunity for us to really share as a community how far we have come. And so, Dr. Taylor and some of the other staff will be working with H.P. Posick. The mayor's office will also be working with Highland Park Parents of Students of Color on developing some specific events and initiatives throughout the year, but Suzanne Ackley also is going to be working with the social studies educators on incorporating our local history into the curriculum K through 12. So, our students will learn about the history of their schools and about how they've changed over time and become the places that they are. So, it's going to be a fantastic, fantastic opportunity.
And you know what, I have to say, it sounds, when you put it all together in that context, it sounds pretty remarkable and pretty singular as well, you know, because, I mean, from what I understand, I think Highland Park has done this. I understand, I think Highland Park has done this somewhat on their own, or am I incorrect? Was it a court deseg order, or did the town?
It was a state, it was a state.
Oh, yeah.
State mandate, it was federal requirement, federal requirement.
So it would be, I think it would be really interesting as we kind of do this throughout the year to try to get some media outlet to kind of follow this as it goes along, because it's, it just seems like it could be such a great example, especially as we roll out the restorative justice programs, and I think it would just maybe really resonate with other districts, you know, not just here, but.
Maybe John Gilm can get involved.
I was thinking about that. Could do, like a documentary.
Another thing to add.
That's not a bad idea.
But if you think like, I mean, if the district would be interested and Post hoc would be interested, I think we should start reaching out to some, like, like real media contacts, like the New York Times, and, I mean, like, that's, it's a really cool story. I mean, that's a really cool thing to...
You're absolutely right. Yeah, you're really right. It's a fantastic story. I think NPR might be interested.
Restorative justice is, is kind of like developing this momentum right now where it's almost becoming like, I hate to say mainstream, but, I mean, more and more districts are starting to look at it, you know, but I think most are way further behind than we are from what I'm hearing from, you know, my colleagues around the state. So it might be this nice kind of like push for other districts to...
And I had just moved into town about a year before, and we were following it closely. In fact, NOROC got very involved in it, and it wasn't simple.
Right, sure.
I mean, there were three elementary schools, and there were forces in each part of town that wanted their elementary school to kind of be chosen, and it was really, really complex and kind of political.
Sure.
And, and it was, it was difficult. It was very difficult to do it.
Right.
And, and, but the town has really changed. It's really been, I think it's, it's been good. My kids went through the schools and, and classes that were, for the first time, at least population-wise, integrated with, you know, with everyone, and it was very, very good. So, big change, and it is a good story.
Yeah, yeah, no, not only, just to follow up with one thing, because one thing that we've kind of brought up several times now and that we didn't put back on the agenda today, Scott and I didn't put it on intentionally, was the idea of the detracking book study, because I have started reading that book that I want us all to read at some point, but as we're, I mean, I think Scott and I decided that as we're getting the restorative justice stuff off the ground and getting staff kind of up and rolling with that, you know, it might not be a good idea to like pummel people with all of this at the same time, like what, let one initiative kind of, you know, grab hold and then start talking about the next. But I did start reading the book myself over the summer that I want us all to read, and it really does talk about, it, it talks about other districts who've gone through the desegregation process, and then the segregation is reinstated through tracking, basically. So, I mean, this, the next conversation that we want to have as a board is really an outcropping of that, you know, what we're talking about right now. Like, we're talking about celebrating the fact that we've desegregated our schools, but what many schools across the country have done is that they recreate that same segregation through the tracks, particularly in the upper, upper level. So that is the next thing, and it will, you know, it is guaranteed to have the same kind of responses and reactions that you have to the desegregation. You know, you get the responses to the desegregation of, just like you were saying, Mark, and we will probably see similar things.
Yes.
As the conversations about tracking happen.
Yep.
So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there, that that's, it's not falling off the radar, but, you know, I think it needs to be all timed very well so that we get, you know, maximum buy-in across the board, because it's, it's going to be another difficult conversation and we all have to be ready for it to be a difficult conversation.
Yep. I did task Suzanne Ackley to have the social studies and history teachers in middle and high school, that are Jan Ed teachers K5, to talk about the anniversary of the desegregation event itself over the years. So she's going to be providing support, probably going to tap the Historical Society archives, which are all downstairs in my, my hall.
Ooh, that's exciting.
And sharing some of that information with those teachers. So that's going to be a project for us.
Yeah, that's a really cool...
The archive material is really fascinating. I got to sit with members of Highland Park Parents of Students of Color and go through archival materials and read poetry written in 1976 by our students and articles that were being written in the school newspaper and, you know, in addition to, you know, your Star Ledger, your, you know, other mainstream newspapers, professional outlets that were writing the stories on us, on Mars Down, on a few other places in New Jersey which had desegregation orders that were handed down. But it's the, the, if you have the chance to go through some of the archival materials, I mean, okay, I'm, I'm a bit of a history buff, so I kind of like this stuff, but I find it fascinating to look at our schools through the, and a lot of it is student materials. Try to get your hands on this stuff. This stuff is fascinating.
You're going on that.
But it's, it's really fascinating to look at it from the perspective of that time period for that set of students writing at the time. So, but, yeah, good stuff.
Can I, can I just add something quickly? So I am not personally part of The Fling, which is the high school newspaper, but I will definitely suggest some of my friends who are editors or editors in different sections or whatnot, to try to also look at some of that stuff. Maybe we could republish some of that stuff and make it more, I mean, not everybody reads The Fling, but enough people peruse it to maybe, you know, start some conversations.
Why don't you talk to your friends and have them email me, so I can arrange for them to come and go through the archives.
Okay, I will do that, and I will also maybe see if we can work with Mr. Lassiter to put out a broader appeal if people are interested. You know, I'm not part of The Fling, but I would love to look at the historical records, so I will, I will talk to some people and him, and I will get back to you, or Liv and I will do that.
We could figure it out. I mean, right now, there are boxes of things sitting in a closet at Bardle. Your books from back in the 20s, yeah, if they had, yeah, they do. There's one other thing I wanted to mention. I took board that I was going to be administering something called an implicit bias assessment to all the staff. We did that on September 6th, and it was powerful. The, every teacher, except for a handful that had to go to a separate workshop, went to a separate area of the high school and middle school in groups with Chromebooks and laptops and logged on to a Harvard website that is sponsored by Teaching Tolerance that chose from one of several categories, gender, weight, race, ethnicity, even your affiliation with certain presidents, and took the 15 to 20-minute assessment to help them uncover, at least have them reflect on what could be their hidden biases, things that might lead to microaggression, the difference in how they approach kids, people. So we have 13 professional learning community meetings coming up, and we're going to be reflecting on those results. We asked the teachers to hold them. We debriefed a little bit. Some were very forthcoming and honest, shared their feelings. So it's a, it's a process, but slow and steady will win the race.
Awesome. Okay, if no one else has anything else for Sharice for Equity and Excellence, then we're going to move on to number 13 on our agenda, public comment. Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation as reserved this time for your comment. If you want to go up to the podium, the list should be there, and I know you know what to do.
Tara Canavera.
See, I don't even have to tell you.
361 C. Crowes Road, Highland Park. I did come here for one comment, but listening to what you had to say, I'm going to add some things to that. As far as starting on Friday with a half a day, I personally thought it was great, and so did most of my friends, and when you opened up aftercare on that day, a lot of the people who were against it also thought it was great then, and have to find childcare for their children for that day. That's number one. You mentioned the cooler for the Bardle Breakfast Program, and I want to know, let you know as a parent of a Bardle student, I think that is an excellent program, because a lot of mornings, the kids are rushing to get there, they run into school, and I know a lot of kids in school, including mine, are late a lot of days, and they're just rushing to get started. This gives them that opportunity to sit down, relax, interact more with their teachers, and get to know each other better, and it's just a more relaxed, great way to start their day. So that program, I think, is excellent also. Restorative justice, I'm so glad we're moving towards that because suspension, especially for special ed kids, is horrible because they're losing valuable class time that they really, really need. So I'm so glad we're moving forward with that. And now the reason I had come. I'd like to compliment some of our district employees. Over the summer, I worked very closely, and I always say her name wrong, Mrs. Bodine. Trying to, Suzie?
Suzie.
Trying to get different things running with CPAC. In the last few years, we were concentrating more on helping parents with IEPs and going to meetings, so we hadn't been as active. We've got quite a few things on the line. I'd like to thank Dr. Taylor for helping us find ways to be able to get more parents involved, and this is like a very special thank you. Bardle PTO has given free back-to-school supplies for all free and reduced lunch children this year. Unfortunately, we did not have a toolbox-type thing in place. So in their free time over the summer, Mrs. Bakora, Linda Moran, Kathy Crossy, and Joyce, I'm going to say her name wrong.
Greg Gregus.
Greg Gregus, all, did all the shopping for every free and reduced lunch kid in Bardle. Also, and they also put everything together and had waiting at the kids' desks, so they really went above and beyond for our students. And I know most of the teachers in our district care about our kids, but those ladies really went above and beyond. And I'd also like to thank, oh, I'm losing her name now. And I talk to her every day.
Charades, Stu Flink.
Suzie Secretary.
Elaine.
Oh, Elaine, yes.
Elaine Donnelly. Every day I talk to her. She has been very helpful with me being extremely busy this year. She has filled out the forms for requesting rooms and just always above and beyond with her also. So I just wanted to point out that we have some really great staff here, and I didn't get a chance to email you, but I will email you all of this also, but I just wanted to make sure they were publicly acknowledged for everything they've done.
Thank you very much, Tess.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Okay, so we'll move on to old, oh, wait, so, no, I'm sorry, moving on to President's Report, that's me. So what we have on here is the Strategic Plan Action Steps for 2017, 2018. So what I'm proposing is at our next meeting, next week, since, you know, we have a pretty light agenda, we've gone through everything, it shouldn't be too long of a meeting, we take that time to look, do what we did last year and pull our goals from the strategic planning steps that are going to be the steps that the, that the administration is going to be focusing on this year. So Scott has already pulled those out for me, so after tonight, I will email those out to everybody, if everybody could take a look at those over the week, and then next week, at our next meeting, we'll move through those and develop our goals. Sound cool?
Great.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we will do that, and that's all I've got.
I have some old business.
Oop.
Are we up to it?
Yep.
Yep, good. So I promised the board around this time I would share an update about the number of students who've enrolled for Mandarin. So I'm going to do that and also give you a sense of the number of middle school students who've enrolled in Spanish. Right now, we have 21 6th graders enrolled in Mandarin. We have 14 7th graders and 16 8th graders. Spanish, we have 83 6th graders, 76 7th graders, and 68th graders. In hindsight, it would have been helpful if I compared last year's Spanish enrollment. I can do that if the board is interested, something I can follow up about.
I would guarantee that it's more. I mean, I think of the kids who had French, children split, you know, some of them went like, ugh.
I wish I could track the number of kids who moved out of French into Mandarin and Spanish, but that would probably be very difficult, so, unless I followed each student. So right now, we are offering four sections of Mandarin. The fourth section is a native, what we call heritage speakers class. We have four students in that class at this point. So I'll come back with an update if anything changes, but right now, those are our numbers. The Finance Committee met, and I, did we, Mark, I'm sorry, did you discuss that during your committee report?
No, 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 I didn't. And, and we, we really didn't go over this very, very much. I mean, I used your, I, I reviewed your information on these sheets, the French, Spanish, and Mandarin enrollment, and the emails that went back and forth. We really didn't have time to go over these numbers.
Okay, okay. I did report to the Finance Committee the projected enrollment from this point forward and, and looked at what could be our staffing needs. It's a lot of detail, but if the board's interested, I can share that email with the full board. Other questions at this point, or things I haven't shared that you'd like more information about?
Yeah, sorry, I just, I had this, I'm still trying to learn about the new Mandarin program. Once they reach high school, will there be, you know, AP Chinese in the way that there was AP French?
That's a great question.
How is it going to progress as they get older?
If the enrollment stays or expands, we'll continue into the high school years. I suggested to the Finance Committee in my chart that we would have the current, Ms. Chang, the current Mandarin teacher for middle school, start teaching a section of 9th grade next year, Mandarin II. At some point, if the enrollment grows, at the very least, well, if the enrollment grows, we're going to have to likely hire at least another part-time Mandarin teacher, likely in, I think I said 2019, 2020, because that's the point at which our 9th graders will become 10th graders.
Right, that's right.
Would, would we have to change the high school or the middle school schedule to accommodate that? Because I know we couldn't accommodate the high school French teacher teaching the middle schoolers because the schedules didn't line up.
So if we, that's a great question. If we...
Wanted to use...
Schedules, if, right now, since we want to talk about one section, it could work if we now know going into this next year's schedule that we have to work around that section, that period, when the Mandarin teacher at the middle school would have to be at the high school. We didn't have that benefit.
It's the other way around, though, Rob. The, the middle school Mandarin teacher is hired. If we go into like 9th and 10th, taking Mandarin in the high school, we would hire a part-time Mandarin teacher in the high school.
Assuming that we approve Mandarin in the high school, et cetera, and all that.
Yeah, yeah, but...
But there's, the, the periods don't line up. They don't have the same start and end time.
But we would have two different teachers. I mean, we would have a full-time middle school.
His first comment was about using our current middle school teacher to teach 9th grade.
Yeah, well, 9th grade.
Right, so...
And that's the concern, of course, is that, yeah, we couldn't schedule the middle school teacher.
I understand, I understand.
But, yeah, but I think if we work it out so that we revolve around that schedule, it'll, it'll then affect where we can slot the middle school kids here with that same teacher.
So there are four kids right now in heritage?
In the heritage speakers class.
And are they, did it spread amongst 6th, 7th, and 8th, or they...
That's a good question. I can find out in a second.
So that's a small number.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
And especially if it's spread amongst three grades, it's a very small number. So, keep an eye on that.
You know, some of us were in language classes in our lives where somebody in that class spoke the language already, and people just lived with it. I mean, I remember, I took three languages, you know, over the years, Spanish, French, and German, and in, certainly in both Spanish and German, we had people there that spoke the language as well as the teacher or better, and everyone lived with it. So the kid got an A, the kid was good at it, and if we only have four, I mean, what Rob, I think, is pointing out is maybe we just don't have a special class.
All four students happen to be 8th graders.
They are.
Who were in the heritage class.
But even so, how many do we have in 8th grade? 16 total. So having a class of 12 in four maybe doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, also, think about that the, if they're all 8th graders, that means zero or six 7th graders, that means that only 5th graders would be in that class next year.
Let me just say that from attending the, the 6th grade orientation, it seems like there's some scheduling issue, so I wouldn't be surprised if these numbers change.
I see, I see.
And parents haven't had a lot of... Parents haven't had a lot of, there hasn't been a lot of notice here. So I'm thinking these numbers, even by next week.
Revolving.
Maybe different.
One of our ELL teachers who I spoke with this morning actually thought that the Mandarin program might end up attracting people to the district who are interested in a program like that, that you might not find in other school districts. I'm not sure how that will play out, but I think Dorsey has a point. Maybe once this program picks up traction, we'll expand it. I think we have to give it at least one more year before we can really determine.
I think if it's just a week, I don't know that we have, you know, I mean, I think kids' schedules are still shifting and changing, so, in the middle school. So I think if you pull it up next week, it might look different. That's all I'm saying.
Potentially, but kids do change.
But I do, I do agree. I mean, we ran into this problem with Hebrew, where we'd have two sections of Hebrew, and between the two of them, they didn't really even make up a whole class.
Yeah, right, right.
So, you know, then you have to start looking at things of combining them. I mean.
Especially if you're talking about overcrowding in other subjects. You might wanna spend the money in a different subject for a sixth period or something, so.
So, so just as far as French, will you, is this the time? You'll tell us what's going on.
Oh, in terms of the 8th graders?
Just to explain to parents what they can expect.
Well, the Finance Committee met about that topic.
We did talk about that.
And you agreed to.
Well, it's not a matter of agreeing. I think we're going forward with it. The money is irrelevant. I mean, the money is 1/100th of percent of our budget. It's just not, it's just not a substantial, I mean, it might sound like a substantial amount in dollars, but it's, you know, it's under, in any event, under $10,000 to continue that program for one year for those students, and it's the virtual learning program. And I think you said this.
And there is a consensus. I don't wanna speak for.
I'd say, I didn't agree with everything, but that's something I could even agree with, and that's, that's, let's do the, you know, have the option for the 8th grade. I think you said 19 families opted to do the virtual learning 8th grade French, and the committee didn't object to that at all, especially since it costs some, you know, very, very little money to do. I might quest, I might, but I won't question the usefulness of a virtual learning class as opposed to having a teacher, but that's just, that's a curriculum issue, not a finance issue.
That's a personnel issue.
Personnel. Anywho, we'll prefer the other.
Well, and then the fact that, that the fact that.
And then what happens with those 8th graders in 9th grade? Are we continuing on another year of French then? What happens in 9th grade for the 8th graders taking virtual French?
Well, that's the question I think the Finance Committee discussed.
We did not discuss that.
You didn't have a chance to do that?
We didn't know, I mean, we don't, no, we didn't have.
So why isn't this a board decision as opposed to a finance decision?
And it should be a board decision, not a finance committee.
Because this involves three different committees.
I agree. It's not a finance committee decision.
I'm not comfortable with this.
Because either way, it costs the same. You can have part-time teacher here, part-time teacher there, full-time teacher there, full-time teacher. The costs of continuing that 8th grade through the high school in French are the same as not continuing, virtually the same. It's not a finance issue.
I don't want anybody to mistake that we were thinking that, like, finance got to make this decision.
I hope not.
After the conversation we had last, at the last meeting, I think it was agreed we should look at what it looks like for the 8th graders. Like, we should look at that.
Right, to look at it. So now I feel like it's a done deal and none of a.
I would say that's the real reason we didn't discuss it. I mean, because it isn't a finance committee decision. And I would say further, I was somewhat surprised at 19 families making that decision to take the virtual class as opposed to taking Spanish or Mandarin with a real teacher. And the fact that we cannot find a French teacher anywhere in the state of New Jersey, including going through, if anyone is listening, going through Rutgers University and trying to find alternate route and doing everything in our power, and we're not the only school in the state, that's, school district in the state that has this problem, and that, so that going through the high school, whether we choose, and I think it's not unreasonable, if 19 families feel that way, I kind of objected. I'm thinking, you know, I expected very few would wanna continue with a virtual class, and then we shouldn't continue it in the high school. But if 19 families want their, and students want to continue to take French in 8th, that means to me they wanna take it in 9th through 12th. And so we shouldn't stand in the way.
And I'm prepared to tell Mrs. Osemea to call those 19 families back to tell them we're gonna continue their studies, as well as the other seven who didn't opt to take the virtual learning class. They may not have taken the class, but being sure that their kids could take the program in the high school year. So I'll make sure that we reach out to all 26 families who were impacted. Now, these are the kids, again, who took French 6th and 7th grade consecutively.
So now, we have, we have 101, from 8th through 12th grade, 101 kids in the high school who are signed up for French this year.
Right.
Correct.
That's a large number.
Who are in the pipeline.
Yeah, no, that's a significant number.
And if it wasn't for the fact that you cannot find a French teacher, we wouldn't be eliminating it.
We'd be talking about this.
Yeah, I have to reiterate my stance on this. Has nothing to do with my affiliate, you know, my appreciation or not of French. I spent $7,000 recruiting.
We wouldn't be talking about not serving those kids, right? We're talking about.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yes, of course we would, of course we would.
Sorry, could I add something? I think it's really unclear to the district as a whole whether or not those students in French will continue taking French, whether the students who are taking the virtual class will continue to take French, what kind of French instruction that'll be, because, you know, an online course doesn't require, I mean, I don't know the specifics of the course, but it doesn't require speaking and stuff. And I know that there've been offers from, for people to try to incorporate speaking somehow, and as an extracurricular or something else in the middle school. And I just think that for parents and students alike, it's, I just don't think there's a clear understanding of when we'll know what the language options are for any student, what they are. I don't think there's a clear understanding of what they are right now, and there certainly isn't an understanding of how long you can take any of these languages. I mean, Spanish clearly is offered from middle school through 12th grade, but I know just from following Facebook conversations and talking to different people in the district, and as somebody who went through the entire French program at Highland Park and finished it last year, so I'm pretty familiar with it, like, there's just, there's very little understanding of whether or not people continue to take French, will take French in high school, and what kind of instruction that will be, and so whether or not it's worth it to stay in the program. So these seven families that opted out, you know, I'm sure that they, that, as well as the people who opted in, don't really understand what their kids should expect.
Well, I think, I think they're feeling the same frustration that we're feeling. We, as we said, we wouldn't be doing this if we could find the staff. If the French teacher resigns tomorrow, we're in the same predicament. We can't find another French teacher. So we can't give those assurances. I mean, it is utterly impossible to give the assurances that that will continue in Highland Park until those kids are 11th graders, because if we can't find someone to teach the class, our hands are essentially tied.
But is our plan clear to people? Is our intention clear, that we're intending to offer it for the next, what, five years? Is that, I mean, is that clear to parents? I don't know if it's clear to parents. I'm not a French parent.
I mean, it wasn't clear to me, just somebody following the conversation. But I also think that, well, from the conversation that's happening now, it doesn't seem to me sure that there will be a high school French teacher, which is, and I'm not in the know of Miss Havas' contract details and what.
There will be five years from now, four years from now.
So that's, so, I don't know, it just seems like there's uncertainty about, you know, whether or not there'll be high school, even just for these five kids to finish up, and then what will happen with.
Julie, what I'm hearing from you is that we could be doing a better job communicating to the whole stupid bodybuilder high school exactly what's going on right now.
And I also just, as somebody who's been following this pretty closely, I would say that there's, there didn't seem to be a lot of discussion prior to the, or from the moment that we knew that there was uncertainty with the high school, or the middle school French program, which was all the way back at the beginning of last school year. There, at least, maybe it was in the middle school parent community it was more clear, but at least as somebody in the district, I didn't hear a lot of that discussion of, well, what language are we gonna offer? What's the benefits of Mandarin? Because I know somebody who's a specialist in teaching Mandarin and Chinese history, and, you know, they said that a year of Mandarin won't do much in terms of conversational stuff, because there's so much, it's so different from English as a language. And so there was, at least to me, it was unclear how much would be offered, and just the decision behind language at the school, to me, has been unclear.
I'll talk to Mrs. O and Mr. Lassner about the best way to get some, a word out. Probably for the high school students, we could send an email. I don't wanna have an assembly around this, but we can do something to.
It's not even just about communicating to the students directly, but I just think that, like, parents, at least, I don't know, at least my family was shocked when in August or whatever it was made aware. And I think that that was similar for lots of my peers and their families, too. But it's not necessarily a matter of communicating directly with the high school students. You know, we're not putting kids through the district and trying to make sure that they have adequate world language instruction.
Well, for the high school, nothing was really changing.
Right, I mean, nothing's really changing in the high school, which is why there wasn't really outreach to the high school kids, you know, students or families, because as of right now, nothing's changing in the high school. That's why the outreach was directed at the middle school. So middle school families were given a, were given a survey. You know, we, you know, the administration tried to get, reach as many of the middle school parents to say, you know, what language would you like if we can't? You know, we're trying to continue the French program, but if we can't, you know, what other languages do you think would be?
And I guess my question with me was with the surveys, because all I've heard is just talk about the survey that was submitted. Was there discussion of, like, the benefits of the different languages offered, or was it really just kind of like, what do you think would be, I just think that, yeah, in general, I just think that, at least to me, as a member of the community, there was just less transparency about the discussion about which language to offer and what would be most beneficial to the students. So I just wanted to.
It is difficult to follow the school board meetings each, each, I mean, we, as much as we invite people to come to the meetings and to monitor them online, yeah, maybe, there are a lot of folks that find them to be a snooze fest, and they don't pay attention until after something happens. And we all do that. We have all done that. Now we're sitting here, and, and so we're, we are responsible to the community to make sure that our feelings are known and that our intentions are known. And while we can't make a decision about what's gonna happen in five years, right now, today, we can talk about our intention. I think we're saying that.
I do think that in terms of the communication, I mean, I heard the same from parents at the middle school, and I said, well, you know, we sent out a survey, you know, that was the time, and letters, you know, to write to the board, and write to Dr. Taylor, and say like, whoa, what's happening? But, you know, like me, a lot of people don't read all their emails because they get 5 million emails from the district, some of which are in PDF form and are very difficult to open if you're on a phone, or especially if you're on a not very smartphone like mine. So I, I mean, I think we do need to do a better job. I think we really tried, but I'm not sure, like, what the answer is. I mean, we had someone, a parent, come in last week who, you know, very convincingly said, listen, I was shocked in August, I'd learned that, you know, French is not gonna be offered, you know, for my 6th grader, or whatever it was. And I do think the 6th grade parents got left out of the boat a little bit, because they weren't in middle school yet. But that being said, I mean, the, what, do you have ideas about, like, what would be a better way for us to get the word out?
Well, I haven't thought, you know, in great detail about this. I do know that there's lots of different kinds of committees and boards and stuff that you, that are subsets, you know, the superintendent's committee, you know, all this different stuff. And I don't know if any, I mean, there's lots of parents in the district who are language specialists. My best friend's parents are like linguistics professors at Rutgers, and, you know, have a better idea of how children, you know, understand. So I think that it would have been interesting to bring in more people, people who are really invested in offering Mandarin, because there are so many Heritage Speakers in the district. So I think that would have been interesting. I mean, I, I don't, so that's one thing that I think would be interesting, just to have more conversation, and it, you know, outside of the board, because there's so many different kinds of perspectives, and I just think that, you know, it's, world language is hard, we struggle with how, you know, trying to offer as much as we can, but we're a small school and stuff. So, and I don't wanna seem like I'm just kind of complaining to you guys. I, I just, it's, you know, I know that you, you all must be aware of, you know, how much buzz there was about the community, and I just wanna make sure that, you know, that we.
It's actually, I mean, it's been a really long conversation from the board's, like, only because we're sitting on the board side of the table, we know how long this conversation has been going on.
Well, 7th graders and 8th graders probably knew about it, too, because there was no teacher.
Oh, yeah, no, I tutored one of those.
Those who have middle schoolers who were impacted, obviously, last year, got clued in a little earlier than others, and those who have rising middle schoolers who are coming from Bartle to here, were introduced to that fairly early on in the summer.
Was there a lot of parent communication and parent outreach in the beginning of this conversation? Like, when you were, when you were starting to talk about stopping this program and going to look for other options, did parents voice concerns about it? Did they, did they talk, did they come in and kind of talk, just kind of try to defend the French program?
Not to the board, not to the board, not to the board.
Not one letter?
So what I think was a shame is that if I had been made aware earlier on, and I'm, like, I don't have contact with a lot of middle schoolers, and so, like, it wasn't in the know, and I don't come to board meetings, so, you know, like, that's my fault, too. But, but I have lots of opinions about the French program. I've sent some of them to Dr. Taylor. I would have come in for public comment. There's some other students in the high school who are almost fluent in French, having just gone through the French program, nothing outside of that. I think there would have been some interest, maybe not a lot, but just some. You know, I, I just think, but I do think that more than anything else, this decision of which language to choose and go forward with, there's lots of factors playing into that, like our relationship with China, you know, is also important and stuff, and these schools that we've established relationships with. But I just think that if the community could know that there was insight from lots of different perspectives into this decision.
So do you think people would respond to, like, a letter calling for a committee? I mean, people didn't respond to the survey very.
I don't wanna, I don't, sorry, I don't wanna.
Oh, I don't wanna put pressure on you, I'm sorry.
No, I don't wanna, I just don't wanna delve too.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Too deep into this hole last time, because we went into literally an hour hole about this at our last board meeting, and we could, we can keep going. But, I mean, Dr. Taylor really did lay out, I think, multiple times, all the steps that were taken along the way, and it's unfortunate that we're here, and we wish we weren't here, but here we are. You know, if anything, the fault of communication, I think, fell on the hopefulness that this was gonna be resolved without having to get to this point, but here we are. So, you know, I think we're, we're trying to have the conversations, we're trying to be as open about it as possible, we're trying to accommodate as many kids' schedules and as many kids', you know, language preferences as, as possible, but it just looks like it's not unfortunately gonna be possible to sustain.
But I think there's something that's not clear, and I hope it's clear that you guys know it at least, which is that there's no intention by this Board of Education to discontinue French for the current 9th through 12th students, and probably the 8th grade students who choose to take the virtual course. Unless we would lose the current French teacher. And I was through that once before, when we discontinued German 25 years ago. I was a board member. And what we did for the students that were left, and that had an audience full of people, and the police here, and a lawyer here, because people were so upset by getting rid of German, and what we did is we arranged private tutoring for the juniors and seniors that were still taking German, so they could finish out their four or whatever years of German at great expense. And, and, I won't say anymore, but, I was gonna say something, which I should, but we might have to do that again, but it might not be this board.
Right.
But our intention is to continue the program until the current students are done.
And so I'm gonna leave this on, on two things. One of the things I ended up saying to the parent who came last week, where we had a lengthy back and forth, was, you know, we can tell you what our intention is as a board, we can't tell you what any future board's intentions are. Some, and that's another formation of this board, next year or two years down the road could look at this and say, there's not enough kids, it's gone.
And to be clear, it's also not necessary to the board. I mean, Mark's saying about continuing it for 8th graders and onward, I would like to see French continued indefinitely at the high school if possible, because I don't think it's a prerequisite necessarily to have middle schoolers coming with French education and starting French education at 9th grade.
Okay, we'll have that conversation another day. Okay, we'll have that conversation another day. We're not opening that can of worms right now, Rob, but thank you for opening a can of worms at the end of a conversation.
I just didn't want you to speak for me as, as part of the board.
I was saying, our intention that we've discussed months, for months and months, is that we wanted to see it continued. That was the only statement that I was making. And I think that's, I think that's a fair statement based on.
I, I never thought you were speaking for me in that way before.
But there is, wait.
I know what you're saying, but that's okay.
There is a market for French amongst this community and all we need is a teacher. So, I think, you know, there.
Oh, no, I, I've seen actually the summary of like the search for the teacher and I understand how extensive it was and I actually even got a request from a parent to contact my French contacts. I understand and I appreciate everything that was done, so I'm not.
I'm speaking to the 11th graders and 12th graders right now that you're talking about, the ones that are fluent, who then can go on and, and become a French teacher. That's what we need. We need that. We, that's what the community wants, other communities as well.
There's a lot of jobs out there in New Jersey that can't be filled right now. A lot of school districts are looking for French teachers.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close out this conversation if we could. The only other thing that I wanted to tag on to the end of this is, you know, this comes up at the board table so much, you know, there was this thing on Facebook, please, all of you, contact us, contact Dr. Taylor. Everyone, you know, hypothesizing about what might be happening, what could be happening, what maybe is going to happen, what's, it doesn't help anything. If, come to a board meeting, talk to us, call Dr. Taylor, talk to Dr. Taylor, or call the principal in the building if there's a concern in the building, call the principal. The, the back and forth on Facebook is very, very seldomly productive. So, I just want to throw that out there. You know, like we're, these are the, these are the people that can help solve problems. One of the problems that we solved was that Friday afternoon, um.
Aftercare.
Aftercare. There was no aftercare. There was, somebody put it on Facebook, hey, why aren't we doing that? Hey, we could do that, let's do that. Look, now we did it. You know, but we're not going to know about that if it's not somebody I happen to be friends with who says it on Facebook.
There's a more direct way of putting it.
Exactly. But if you call the school and you say, hey, how come there's no after school? Don't assume it's because we're not friendly to parents, don't assume that it's because we don't like children, you know, like assume that we're here to meet as many people's needs as humanly possible and if we can, we will. Let's, let's assume the best about each other, not the worst about each other. And know that we're all here working to try to create the best programs possible for all of the students.
If I could just take it one step further, as, you know, an elected official, the same is true for all of our local elected officials. I think that, you know, conversation is cool, it's nice to have a conversation, but having a conversation that you intend to, you know, produce something positive is more likely to happen with the people you've elected to that position. So, in, in any instance, I would say unless it's something, you know, like a person lost item or a pet, Facebook is probably going to have the first place to go with your question.
We're here.
I, I second Darcy's motion.
My email box, my email inbox is very often sad and lonely and empty, so fill it on up if you're concerned.
Speaking, speaking for all local elected officials, do the same for the council, the mayor.
Oh, I'm sure they're going to love us while in your head.
Really, as an activist, I feel like that is important to say, that you are not, you know, given an award as an activist or a label, like you get out there and do stuff, so do it, you know? Contact your representatives at all levels.
It's important to say you don't have to come to a board meeting, although we welcome people. I mean, our emails are on the website. If you can't come to a board meeting, I think everybody understands that because they're late and they're, they can, they have a lot of boring parts. So, you know, please email us. Your first, you know, the chain of command for a personal problem you have at school is the teacher, the principal, Dr. Taylor, then the board. But if you have a concern about school policy, I mean, people should feel free to email us. They don't have to come for three hours and wait for public comment.
All right. Well, also, just one more comment. I think that there are, there's a lot of traffic on social media, specifically Facebook in this particular community. So, would it therefore help us if we put the agenda out on Facebook? I mean, it's a public record, so why couldn't, so then someone, you know, there are tons of people on Facebook at any given time during the day that can click on our agenda and see if there are items of concern and therefore become.
That's a good idea.
Absolutely.
On the district Facebook page?
On the district Facebook, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't see any objections to you, Ms. Hoffler. We could do that.
Perhaps on the Highland Park's parents page or something that maybe, I mean, I know there's a district.
Things that are exclusive like that?
Well, perhaps not that, but someone can share or something.
I'll put it on my.
Anybody can put it on that page, but for us to put it on that page would not be appropriate.
And if they follow us, we can do that, right? On Facebook, follow the page, yes. Follow your agenda.
On Instagram, right?
You know, Facebook is for old people now.
We're going to start snapchopping our agendas.
When the old people disappear.
Oh, yeah, the parents might follow Facebook.
All right, so let's move on to the next item.
Can I make a comment about old business?
We're not moving away from old business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move on to the next item.
Oh, I thought, you already spoke about re-registration.
I was hoping to talk about re-registration, enrollment.
But we, in terms of the re-registration process, did we learn anything new from that process? Do, you know, and are we going to do it again and is it going to be done the same way?
I can't say that if we covered any hidden non-residents. Of course, I won't know that because those folks who have not re-registered with us may very well be people who didn't enroll their kids in our school right now. However, we, we have quite a few left, so we do have 79 Bartle families left to re-register, 44 at the middle school and 24 at the high school. Our next step is next week, once this first full week is done, to contact these people once more by phone. We do not hear back, but they do not re-register. We are going to send residency letters home, it's a form letter, it's like statute and frankly, I mean, I think as a board and we have to have a discussion at some point what that next step could be. My last district, we actually hired a private investigator, which a lot of districts do, to scout out the homes and see if these folks actually live where they were supposedly living, so.
Scott, do we have any stats on like, sort of, what, what is the typical rate of, I mean, if there's even such a, of not, I mean, do we think we're really going to save a lot of money doing this or do we, are we seeing this more as a deterrent, which will deter future families from, you know, trying to get a free ride on this education?
I remember talking to a superintendent, Milburn, well, two years ago, he was struggling with how, he was, they were struggling with how to go through the re-registration process. They ended up using an automated computer system of some kind. But we had this chat about what the, what the positive outcome would be and.
Right.
There really is no, I mean, I have no quantitative data to show you that says this works or doesn't work. However, I feel in my heart that if we didn't engage in this process at least once every couple of years, we might not at all have dealt with people who were coming to us from other towns. And I have to tell you, just today, for instance, I found out that we have, I got a call from a parent, I didn't get the call from middle school, got a call from a parent in New Brunswick, apologized for sending her three children back to Highland Park Schools, but she hasn't found a residence yet here in Highland Park. So, now we're trying to get more information about who this individual is and there are people who are sending their kids to our schools from out of district.
And we've had people on the opposite end saying, you know, I've now moved to so-and-so, you know, how do I get my kids to, you know, how do I get my kids to your school? Like, well, you don't register where you moved.
We've heard a lot of men have had kids withdraw once they found, once families said to themselves, oh my gosh, I have to actually procure documentation that shows I'm a resident now, I better not go down that road. I'm just going to bag it, move and go. In fact, I have enrollment data that shows a fluctuation from year to year since 2015, up and down. We have many kids leave, then we have many kids come.
It'd be great to know if there are more people who withdrew this year. In other words, I mean, I, I know not all of the board members, maybe most board members don't share my reservations about the process. You know, I had some serious reservations about the way it was carried out and even doing it at all, frankly, speaking for myself personally. And if we have no data of any sort that indicates that it has like a real deterrent effect or indicating that it, you know, that it actually uncovers fraud, I, I have real reservations about continuing to go through the process. I, I mean, if, if there's, if there were many withdrawals this year, there's a spike in withdrawals, perhaps that would indicate that it had some deterrent effect, but.
What, what's the tuition for out, for, for somebody attending our school district from out of?
It's in the teens and it depends on the grade level.
Right.
It depends on the age of the child.
Right. I mean, if we, if we don't ever uncover anybody who's doing it, we're never going to get people to write a check. We're just going to like terrify people and, you know, that's, that's, that's the concern. I mean, but maybe there is real evidence out there that when schools do this in general across the nation, it tends to deter X amount of fraud, you know? If there's no data like that, then I question the.
I can't imagine there's not data on it somewhere.
Well, but let's find out, you know, would be my preference. Maybe I will find out.
I think there is definitely a benefit to doing it. I think there is a benefit to doing it on an annual basis and structuring it based on the, the years. But I, you know, I, I've found some other school districts that did it a different way and have brought it to some other board members' attention, but it was too late at that time when I found a way of doing electronically or end or through just an envelope that was dropped off with the secretaries, you know? Found that information a little bit too late for us to change our process for last year. But I want to seriously consider changing the process, you know, in the future as we move forward, if we do find that it's beneficial for us to continue doing it.
Well, but I mean, I think we offered, I think, I think people could do that. I mean, I think people could just come into the office and re-register. I mean, there was a bulk time, a bulk time might be, might not be the way, there's, I mean, just like you can come during these periods of time. It wasn't like if you don't come during these periods of time, you're going to be disenrolled, you know? I mean, there are still multiple people that haven't done it yet and that's what's going to happen. They'll be encouraged to just come in and bring their information.
How many people?
So, it's not like, we didn't force anybody to.
They, they don't even need to come in, like the way I did it was I sent it in electronically.
Right, well, if somebody can do that, then fully too.
But we don't allow that. We require them to come in personally, so maybe the next time we won't do that.
Right, that's, that's the thing. I think we had the implication that you needed to come in a certain time, a certain day and do it with, with the forms and have originals and copies or.
But what I'm saying is multiple people have it, so I don't think that's the, the expect, that was offered, people have done it and now the secretaries are following up with those people. So, those people are clearly doing it as they can.
Are they being required to come in personally to the office or can they just send in their data? I, I think they have to come in personally and show their ID and all that kind of stuff.
For me, they, I received a letter at home saying, hey, you guys didn't provide your re-registration paperwork, please email it to so-and-so.
Oh, oh, I see.
But that's only if you already had not done, I mean, for those who paid attention to the original orders, the mandate was to show up. Right. So, because I took off.
Right, and I think that was.
I had to take time off from work to come in. So, and any working parent would have had to have taken off.
Scott, how many people, how many people did not, how many people, families did not re-register? Well, total, 79 Bartle plus 44 middle, okay, plus 24 high, so. Do you do that? I can do the math. It's about 140, it's slightly of 100, whatever.
About 10%.
It's 10% of the population.
Well, that's, that's just for odd years, right?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, so we have.
It's 18% of the population.
Yeah, so, so for instance, for Bartle, we required 252 students, families, guardians to re-register, we still have 79 to go. So, that's a little more than 10%, actually.
So, what I'm hearing is for these folks who haven't done it yet, can we make it as, you know, they can email it in, they can, you know, however they get the information into us, get the information into us.
It's a great idea.
You don't have to show up in the office, you don't have to like.
Mail it in.
Mail it in.
Wonderful.
Send it with a pony, like I don't care how you do it, just get it in.
And then the people who don't give it in after everything we've tried, I would take a sample of 50 of them and go online, go online to one of the services, it won't cost much, to see where people really live. And you can do that.
Right.
And it's not illegal and it's not, it's not a, a privacy issue, I think.
We can console with Jonathan with.
Yeah, Jonathan will tell us how to find out where they really live.
Just a quick question.
Jonathan's our attorney.
Of those students who have not re-registered, do we know that they have all shown up for school? Or did they not re-register because they disenrolled?
Yeah.
We have to cross-check that list with the, with the actual attendance records. Who showed up on Friday, who showed up on Monday, who shows up on Tuesday?
I wish I thought of that before tonight. Thanks, I'll get back to you on that. I, that's, next week, it'll be on the old business agenda. I will also make a note to myself to come back to a committee, definitely, Rob, perhaps in January, February, as we're looking ahead to spring, if we choose to re-register again, how we might be able to do it more seamlessly. And I'll follow up next week with more data, okay?
Okay, great, great.
Including that great, answer that great question.
Yeah, and we think that next year, it can be more of an option. You can come at this time or you can email it in, or you can come to the office, or you can send it with your pony. I don't care, just.
If you're a Game of Thrones fan or whatever.
Bring it, send your pony.
Or your dragons, as long as they haven't been afflicted by.
All right, we're starting, let's go, let's get on to the second part of Scott's old business beat.
I, I am going to make a point to, every August, tally up all our enrollment numbers, look at our class sizes, especially since we have all of these new developments coming online in the next several months. So, I'll, I'll tell you right now, we've always seen a net increase of 35 students since June of 2017. Currently have 1642 students in district, 1,642. However, a lot of those students are coming to our middle school and our numbers, our class sizes are jumping, especially in social studies and science at the middle school. Darcy asked me to run a tally of numbers of students in classes as they compare to what our principals identify as the target cap for those classes. So, at Bartle, Mr. Benjamin likes to keep his number at 20. We have several classes that are above that number, no more than 23. We have two grade four classes that have 23 students in them. And, and we did discuss that that might be the case when we limited the sections to five instead of six and fourth grade this year. The other classes are 22 or 21 and everything else at Bartle is at that target. Irving has, has met its target, the Irving target for pre-K is 17 and for kindergarten to first grade, it's 23. We're, we're there in terms of class size. At the middle school, we have our, well, let me skip to the high school and then come back to the middle school. At the high school.
Good idea.
Well, save the best for last, save the worst for last. We're fortunate.
I'm sorry, I just want to say, you guys are free to go, nine o'clock on, so you're welcome, but you're also welcome to just take off, so don't feel like you are like stuck here until we are done.
Actually, class sizes is something I feel pretty invested in, so.
Always welcome to stay, but don't ever feel like you are forced to when you've got tons of homework and exams and whatever else.
Tonight, so.
So, at the high school, we're fortunate that we do not have any, our, our target's 30, 30 max. We do not have any core subject classes, any non-special subject classes that have, that are at or exceeded that target. The classes that have exceeded 30 are your special subjects, the choir, which is actually a relatively good thing in that we gave kids the option as to whether they wanted to come in later and skip music. We have 34 students right now in our choir, which is a, is a great number for first period. In fact, just in general, you should know that about 50, approximately 50% of our high school students chose to come in first period, the other half, second period, which is better than I expected in that I thought two-thirds of our kids were going to want to come in later, based on the numbers we had rolled to study hall last year. Now, the middle school, we do have, our, our target's also 30, I'm sorry, our target's 25. We do have a number of classes, core subject classes that have hit 30, especially in social studies and science. Spoke to Mrs. Osemea about the reason for that. Some of it has to do with new, red, new students coming to our doors since August 28th. And other reasons have to do with IEP changes. The social studies and science classes tend to be where a lot of students who might have resource room, have it for language arts and math, but then have in-class support or pushed in mainstream for social studies and science. So, that's one reason why our numbers are up. In several of these classes, we have a second teacher, a special education teacher. Something which I'd like to come back to the, like the finance committee and maybe the personnel committee about is potentially adding additional sections of some of these classes between now and next week to reduce the size from 30, especially in social studies. But if we do that, we will have to compensate those teachers for the sixth period classes. So, obviously, the first thing I need to do is speak to Linda to see what we budgeted for sixth period and then make a potential recommendation to the finance committee.
And then, are there, I mean, are the other social studies and science classes just right under that 30? So, it's not like some of the gen ed students from those classes can get moved into other sections of science or social studies?
Mrs., I asked Mrs. Osemea that question. She is concerned that that would then mean they're displaced from world language, other classes that they want.
To determine a factor.
We're trying, you know, the other factor in all of this is the middle school is trying harder to offer more choice to kids. Little by little, we're expanding electives, and that then means we have to, if we're going to accommodate the kids' first choice with their electives and their world languages, we have to, we have to fidego the schedule as best we can, if we can only fit them certain classes, so. IEPs, new kids coming to our, our school, increased electives, it's all adding up to.
Actually, you have those numbers, don't you? The number of new kids in each school?
I do.
It was kind of startling, the number at the middle school. It was like 32 or something.
Yeah, it's 32. The other kids.
New registrations. So, it's like, yeah, it's significant, so.
So, even though we had an increase of 35 students since June, we obviously lost some students. But since August 28th, we have 15 new Irving students. We're talking one week now. 11 new Bartle students, 32 middle, new middle school students, and 12 new high school students.
And, I mean, the amazing thing is, is this is what happens, I mean, my husband's a third grade teacher in New Brunswick. This happens all the time in New Brunswick. It's the first day of school and the line's out the door to register. Because folks just, they, right, I mean, they.
Secretaries of principals.
I think we're seeing that.
These are inordinate, not, these are like high numbers, though. I mean, they're, even the principals admitted that they hadn't seen this since, in years or something.
Yeah, do we even have the classroom furniture available? My daughter didn't have a seat in Spanish today.
Space, furniture, supplies are not a problem.
Like, bizarre.
It's just class size.
Flexible seating.
And some would argue 30, 30 in some schools is acceptable, but for us, it might not be. We need to have that discussion.
Scott, we did go over in finance, the sixth period costs that weren't budgeted, which I believe we, Linda, you came up with $30,000 more or less as the average right at the moment. And I would say if we could do it through sixth period at the middle school and, and get, and get the appropriate class sizes for, let's call it, numbers like that without having to hire new full-time people. The problem with hiring, it would be good, because the problem with hiring new full-time people is you hire somebody or you hire two people, not only does it cost a lot more, including, you know, with benefits, but then you have another cohort coming through, let's say, from, from Irving or Bartle, and the group is smaller, and then you have to get rid of that person. So, the sixth period solution with costs in the, you know, tens of thousands, not hundreds of thousands, is an obvious way to do this. And we shouldn't have kids in classes with 32 and not having a desk.
And there's a pile of money that we have to figure out what to do with.
And we have the money, burning the hole in the pocket. They're going to be very, very warm in June because all of the classrooms won't have air conditioners.
And it's going to be even worse if there's 32 of them in there.
That's right. Because we've run out of money, but.
So, Scott, one more time, this is not a function of the number of students in the middle school, it's a function of the middle school's schedule, correct?
No.
So, it's not, it's not a larger.
It's a combination.
Combination.
There's 32 extra registrations. Since August 28th.
And that's just since August 28th.
Is it, is it spread across like 10, 10, and 10? Or are we looking at?
Oh, I didn't find out, but I can. I mean, I'm not sure what the great spread is on that. It's a function of IEPs. IEPs change. You could have years in which a mass of students are now getting in-class support in social studies and science, which is going to raise those numbers. I mean, that's not driven by anything other than what happens to be the choice of those parents that year.
So, but then, working through that, if we have this increase now in the middle school, do we have any sort of data showing that this increase in the middle school will continue through the high school and we'll be looking at the same sort of problem in the high school? Or is there more flexibility in the high school schedule?
It's a great question, but my, my read on this now, since I'm looking at the net gain in three months as only being 35, who can tell whether or not we're going to shed students from middle to high school that would balance those numbers out?
All right.
Okay, can you send that document around to everyone?
Yeah.
So, I want everybody to be able to see.
Yeah.
Class enrollment.
And also, I mean, the thing that we kind of skipped by is the, the sizes of the gym classes in high school, which.
Does it have a breakdown of class by class, of individual offerings?
Well, I'm sorry.
Of all the enrollment? Not just enrollment, but who's in what, how many kids are in AP history in 11th grade?
No, 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 I was, for this, I was just specifically asking.
No, I'm just curious.
Wait, hold on, hold on. I want to get, what are you asking? I don't understand what you're asking.
I'm asking whether that breakout has, has class sizes for each individual class as well.
No, I just specifically asked Scott to tell me what the target class size was in each building and what, wherever we're exceeding that, whatever class that is, so we can try to get the class size thing under control at the beginning of the year when we have extra money to do it.
Right.
So, it wasn't, I'm not, we're not looking at all of them. I don't know that there's six people.
Okay, it's not in this one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Extra money's all good.
I'm sorry, guys.
Okay, well, I was just going to express concern about particularly the AP humanities, like, AP English is a really, has a really large problem with class size in high school. I don't know about this year, but particularly last year, both classes were, I'm pretty sure both classes were filled.
Our class had 30 students, maybe 29. And actually, our English class freshman year had 32 students in it. That's been pretty consistent, whether they decide to have two honors or three honor sections.
In a classroom that is maybe not even a quarter of this cafeteria, and that was a major problem. And then, AP history as well, because we, I think one of the reasons is because we only have one, that, that classroom also tends to be much, much larger than others. And I think AP science also clearly plays into that with schedule changing, but like, we've both noticed in our classes in the past two years that they have been much larger, particularly in AP English and AP history.
Okay. I'm looking at some of the numbers right now. We have a US history, AP class of 27.
Yeah, and that's in a really pretty small room, but there's two couches in that room. And actually, we've, there's been moments where it's like, oh, there's one seat missing, so you can sit at the teacher's desk or you can sit at the couch. And I just think that's, you know, it's just a scheduling error and it's not great, but it's just, it just kind of speaks to the.
Are you in that classroom right now? Because I don't think those couches are there anymore.
Um, in Mr. Gold's room?
Yeah.
They, they have been moved outside. It's not, you know, it's, it's just, I think it's not, and I don't want to like, you know, round in Mr. Gold's room or whatever, but this is not just an AP history problem. I was in an AP US history class last year that had about 27, 29 students. That was really large. And also, an AP language class that had 30 students. I just think it's a big, it's a, it's, the real difference is whether or not we choose to offer three honor sections or two honor sections, and that makes a huge difference. I've been in an English class where there was three honor sections, and we got so much more done and there was so much more discussion. And then I've been in classes with 30 students and there's very little discussion. Socratic seminars aren't Socratic seminars. They're kind of like note-taking sessions where 20 kids try to have a discussion at one time and speak over each other and make it disruptive.
Yeah. I am, I was curious also about, because of the elimination of honors history in 11th grade, how that has impacted the class sizes.
US honors option class?
Yeah, the option. Option class, you know, across, across the grade, I guess, with history.
That would be useful to know.
What the class sizes look like.
All right, so why don't we ask, yeah, let's not do that now, but we'll have, we can ask Scott to follow up on that later.
Doesn't have to be now.
Yeah, okay. So, if nobody has any other questions about either of those topics, does anybody have any other old business?
Yeah, just a quick thing. I was looking back at our, the agenda for the 21st that we were approving today, or, sorry, that we'll be voting on. We talked again at that meeting about the issue with the use of computers for homework at the middle school and possibly the high school, too, and what provisions we're making for students who don't have access to the internet and, classroom, and you were going to get back to us on that. I know we, you know, we have some routers and, I mean, my kid, my kid has a computer at home and the internet, but my experience is that there hasn't been at least an explicit provision made for students in the class who might not have a computer or might not have internet access to do their homework on Google classrooms. I'm wondering what we're, what our plan is.
I have a note to myself, September 18th, Monday, to have principals send out advertisement about computer availability for kids in need.
Okay.
So, I will be following up on that, but I wanted to wait till after the first week of school.
Great, okay. So, what will the principal's message be? Will it be that, you know, you can borrow?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll give instructions to how you could loan, borrow one.
Oh, fantastic.
To have loaners available.
Wonderful.
Usually do, in every building.
Thank you.
Next week.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Scott.
No problem.
So, can we, if we're going to do that, I think we may need to inform the teachers to coordinate their instruction. I mean, I know my girls in the middle school today were sent home and their homework was specifically on the computer online. So, if, first day. So, if, if teachers are already assigning, saying, here's what you have to do the first day of school, but that hasn't been put in place yet, those kids go home and they can't do.
And frankly, it's just starting to just keep happening. We talk about this all the time, and like, it keeps happening. The teachers just say, everybody go home and do the classroom and, you know, and it's, it's fine for my kid, but it's not fine for some kids, and it needs to stop, or it needs to, you know, there needs to be.
I completely understand. I'll tend to it tomorrow. I won't wait till Monday then.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Because, I mean, the reality is that there are classes for which they have classroom-based books, but there are no take-home books for the kids. So, even if they have to do their reading and they have to do their work online for their classes, like, you're not taking a textbook out of the classroom and taking it home with you. So, you know, we have to get that coordinated in a way, you know, I mean, I appreciate the fact that you're doing this.
Yes.
Day 18th, and not, we, we're not waiting for this until, you know, October to start having this conversation. But, you know, if the teachers expect students to come out of the, you know, gates immediately at the beginning of the year, then we have to be coming out of the gates with the technology solutions at the beginning of the year, or we have to stop utilizing those for our classrooms.
And teachers need to understand that you can't assign those things until that's in place.
Well, and the problem is, though, that a lot of our curriculum is delivered in that manner. There are classroom-based books, a set of books for the classroom, and they are not take-home books. So, if you have a set of homework problems, your homework problems are online. If you don't have a way to get online, you don't have a way to do your homework.
We're talking about detracking. We haven't figured this out. I mean, I, I believe, we've talked about this, I think, like, every year I've been on the board, that, you know, that we need to figure out some way to do this. How are we going to equalize this for students who are in classes that have, you know, computer homework, and nothing ever gets done? I'm really glad, I'm so glad we're doing something about it. I hope the teachers will really, like, take on board the fact that they need to make sure everybody's getting a loaner, and if they're going to assign this homework every day, then people need to have a loaner every day. And if that's not possible, then we need to talk about that.
Can I just ask, because, you know, we've been on the board for the same number of years and I feel the same way, like, how is the process? When we say something at the board table that we are, you know, in unison, in agreement, I would assume, right, that this is an issue, that it needs to be addressed, three years have gone by and it doesn't get addressed? I mean, how, what is the process of communication between this board and the teachers, not the administration or Dr. Taylor? How does this information get to send over to the teachers? That's my question.
Right.
Well, I'd like the teachers to continue utilizing technology for homework use, for class use. I do think I need to do a better job providing computers to those kids who don't have access. Or, that might mean opening up labs after school, or going the route, as Sharice pointed out, providing texts or paper materials that supplement. But I don't want to, I really don't feel it's appropriate for us to have any blanket policy that says, hey, can't assign homework on a computer.
Well, and I don't, I don't think anybody's ever advocated for that, but I do, I appreciate everyone's frustration that this comes up continually.
I completely understand it. I think it's valid.
And with, when it is very difficult to communication, communicate with families, you know, it's, it's almost impossible to think that there aren't kids who aren't going to, you know, families who aren't going to get, you know, left out of that loop. And, you know, then I think it's, we need, the teachers need to be instructed very specifically that if you have a student who's not completing homework because it's online, then there needs to be some kind of intervention there. You can't just let a kid keep not doing their homework because they don't have the tools home to do their homework.
Right, they can't wait until the second or third or fourth week of school for that to happen.
Yeah.
Because those kids are going to, like, they'll be lost.
And there needs to be a proactive message sent by the teacher to the class, like, a lot of this, you know, the class, a lot of the homework in this class is going to be on Google classrooms. So, you know, we have a, we have a program in Highland Park where if you need a computer, blah, 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 blah. The teachers don't need to be waiting for some, like, little seventh grader to come up and be like, or sixth grader, you know, God forbid, like, I don't have a computer. You know what I mean? That's embarrassing for a kid.
I completely agree with you, and I'm going to address it tomorrow.
Fantastic. Thank you, Scott. That's really good to know.
But I do feel like, at this point, we do need to have a policy, because the communication is not happening.
Right.
And while I appreciate your efforts, you know, in getting that word to the teachers tomorrow, Dr. Taylor, it's been three years. And I, I do feel strongly that this is an issue that is being, I don't want to say purposefully ignored, but rerouted, perhaps. You know, it's an issue that needs to be addressed. There is no rerouting around this. There are students that do not have Wi-Fi. There are students that do not have anything but an iPhone. One iPhone in the entire family. This, this is not, I'm not, you know, talking about somewhere in, in urban district, I'm talking about Highland Park.
Right.
I'm, I'm beyond frustrated with this issue.
Yeah, likewise. I mean, let's, let's hear what happens and how the principals react to, to what, what you're going to tell them, and let's, you know, we'll wait to see what changes are made in the classrooms. And I hope that we will see changes this time.
Yeah, I know.
And part of those three years, you, of course, weren't here, but it is something that we've been like, blah, 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 every two meetings, you know, well, what about all the students that don't have computers?
I mean, let's at least acknowledge, though, that something's being put into place for next week.
No, I appreciate, yes, wonderful.
So, let's not say nothing's happening.
No, I just, I just want to make it clear that next week, I am, we are revisiting this.
And we have heard that something was going to happen for a long time, so I, we're frustrated for that reason. But I do very much appreciate that if something happens next week, that's fantastic. I appreciate that. I know you take this seriously, Scott, you know, of course, but it's one of many things you have to take seriously.
I mean, I, the one suggestion that I do have, which would make it a lot simpler, and, I mean, we're already into the semester, but it doesn't mean that teachers can't put out a new syllabus for their course, is to have it as a standard statement on every teacher's syllabus for every classroom, especially at the middle and the high school. And that, that information be made readily available to families as part of that packet they fill out at the beginning of the year for technology request form. When you're doing your health forms, when you're doing your free and reduced lunch forms, when you're doing your, just include it as a standard technology request form. And, you know, that'll also allow us to sort of gauge what the need is. The parents have to fill out those materials and submit them to the school, so they're going to see it. It's the one packet we dread pulling out of the mail and having to fill out all the pages in there. I mean, I do see the value of having the electronic materials. It's not that I don't. I think that it's a really positive thing to have your textbooks online for students who forget them in their lockers.
For students who have two homes, actually.
Right, or for, exactly, exactly. Very good point. For students who have more than one home, and we have many students in our district who have more than one home. who have more than one home. So, you know, or who have a lot of traveling that they do after school, in between things. I think that's a really positive thing, but, you know, if we can kind of find a way to get that information out a little bit more.
I think you nailed it.
And it's just an issue with we don't have enough computers.
And dog tired. I just wanna give you, like, a shout-out for that, like, you nailed that one, dog tired.
And I think that, if there's, excuse me, if there's an issue that we don't have enough computers to meet that need, then we, we obviously need to talk about that, right?
Right, right. Yeah, I like that we had a solution. All right, so if nobody has any other old business, I'm just gonna bring up one thing for new business. Does anybody else have anything?
I, I have one thing, I'm not sure where to put it, because I should've mentioned.
Well, it's on under new business now.
Okay, we'll put it there, under policy, under the late, I, I wasn't reading it correctly, and I have serious concerns.
Okay, if, if you're going back to policy, email Ann. We're not gonna go back to.
To the entire board?
Huh?
To the entire board?
Email Ann.
Email Ann.
About policy, yes.
Okay, because, just so you know, I, I don't like the revisions.
Okay, but, but you had, since Thursday, to look at it, we discussed it, so now, if you have a comment about it, you can email it to Ann, and we'll talk about it next week.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, if anybody else has anything else for new business, now, the only thing I wanted to mention is, I can just kind of take a poll of faces, does anybody want to go into closed session right now to have a follow-up to our previous closed session, so we can put a end on that? It can, you know, be as short as five to ten minutes, and then we'll adjourn from there? Yes, okay.
Yeah, we have to come back here?
No, we don't.